Precinct one. Precinct one reports fifteen present, ten absent. Precinct two. Precinct two reports sixteen present, thirteen absent. Precinct three. Precinct three reports sixteen present, fourteen absent. Precinct four. Precinct four reports twelve present, fifteen absent. Precinct five. Present. Eight absent? Sounds good. Precinct six. Precinct six reports twenty present, seven absent. Precinct seven. Precinct seven reports twenty-eight present, two absent. Precinct eight. Precinct eight reports eighteen present, twelve absent. At large. Precinct, our large reports sixteen present, eight absent. One hundred fifty-six members being present. We have a quorum. Will the monitors please bring forward their attendance sheets? Are the special election held in precinct five? James Wheelock of One Cuniff Avenue was elected. And in the special election in precinct six, Richard Vilani of Five Washington Street was elected as the town meeting member. In good shape there, Louis. A quorum being present. The media will come to order. The clerk will now read the warrant.
Good evening, everyone. This is the annual town meeting, May nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, Milford, Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County. To either constable of the town of Milford in said county, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth aforesaid, you are hereby notified and warned, the inhabitants of the town of Milford qualified by law to vote in town affairs to meet in the upper hall of the Milford Town Hall, fifty-two Main Street, on the nineteenth day of May, two thousand fourteen A.D., at seven thirty P.M., and then and there to act upon the following articles. Article one.
Motion made and seconded. We dispense with the reading of the articles. Does any voter care to be heard on the motion to dispense with the reading of the articles? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense with the reading of the articles. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is carried. The clerk will now read the officer's return.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County, Milford, Mass., date April seventh, two thousand fourteen. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified the inhabitants of the town of Milford to meet at the time and place for the purpose within mentioned by posting attested copies of this warrant in ten or more public places in Milford. Tomaso Laughlin, police chief.
Are there any resolutions to be presented to the meeting? Mr. Di Bartolomérez.
Mr. Moderator. Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of Anthony F. DeLuca Jr., whereas Anthony F. DeLuca Jr. was for many years an elected member of precinct five of the town meeting, whereas Anthony F. DeLuca served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute to his memory, and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to his family respectfully submitted. Dino Di Bartolomérez, chairman. Brian W. Murray, esquire. And William V. Buckley.
Are there any other resolutions? Mr. Di Bartolomérez.
Moderator.
Yes.
Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of Frederick P. Belforti, whereas Frederick P. Belforti was for many years an elected member of precinct four of the town meeting, whereas Frederick P. Belforti served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute to his memory, and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to his family respectfully submitted. Dino Di Bartolomérez, chairman. Brian W. Murray. And William D. Buckley.
Any other resolutions? Mr. Buckley.
Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members?
Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of Robert J. Johnson, whereas Brian W. Murray, esquire. Whereas Brian W. Murray served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute to his memory, and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to his family respectfully submitted. Dino Di Bartolomérez, chairman. Brian W. Murray, esquire.
Any other resolutions? Attorney Murray.
Moment of truth. Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of Robert J. Johnson, whereas Robert J. Johnson was for many years an elected member of precinct two of the town meeting, whereas Robert J. Johnson served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen, and I might add, a selfless volunteer for the Milford Legion program for many, many years. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute to his memory, and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to his family respectfully submitted. The Milford Board of Selectmen.
Before we rise, can I ask in the back if we could close that door so that we could have a true moment of silence in respect of the town meeting members that we've presented resolutions on? If it's possible? If not, then we'll... I'll ask the members to stand in solemn tribute of a moment of silence in honor of Anthony F. DeLuca Jr., Frederick P. Belforti, Brian Carmier, and Robert J. Johnson. Recognize the chairman of the finance committee for the report of the finance committee.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Selectmen, town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen. Everybody has received in the mail our budget and our recommendations for all the articles. I'm just going to summarize a couple of them here and move forward. Obviously, this is what we always do. We have a conservative budget management. Better? Not better? Not better? All right. Finance committee typically is a conservative group, and we try to manage the budget that way, as I've said in the past. Our goals are to reduce long-term debt without increasing operational budget by adding available funds to stabilization. Increase funding for infrastructure, and this year we put in five hundred thousand to the highway department. And increase and maintain commitment to reduce the tax rate. And this year, or fiscal fifteen, we budgeted a million dollars. The objective, yet again, taxpayer relief of a million, capital projects of a million, debt service limit of three point five million, fulfill contract obligations, which is what we ask the departments to do when doing their budget, and operational expense and maintenance at zero percent increase. And increase the stabilization account by five hundred thousand for fifteen. Balance sheet, I don't know if you guys can see it, but the budget comes in at about eighty-seven million, three hundred fifteen thousand, five hundred and five dollars. Net revenue is ninety-three million. Net expenses on stabilization overlay assessments, capital projects, and levy adjustment, five point two million for a net surplus of two hundred and twenty-six thousand for fiscal fifteen. That's what we're projecting, and that's what was budgeted. I pulled out a couple of departments that didn't quite meet the goals for obvious reasons. The I.T. department is about a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar department. It was never in the budget last year. It's a new department, so it didn't meet the goal. But we will have an I.T. director and a couple of members, and we're going to start doing what we need to do in this town. We're a ninety million dollar corporation without an I.T. department. So now we have one. Hydrant service went down twenty-three point one percent because fiscal fourteen, we budgeted for the maximum increase. We didn't get that increase thanks to the town council and others, and so we had a twenty-three percent reduction in hydrant service. Veterans administration went up ten point nine percent, mainly due to troops returning home and services needed to be given to these troops. And the Veterans Administration is a very well-run organization, so whenever they ask for money, and there's an article on the warrant tonight, I, to make up the budget for this year, were about forty-five thousand. Historical commission, I'll pass that. Went up seventy-four percent. Major, major increase. Actually, they have a budget of twelve hundred dollars, and they added a thousand dollars to the budget to do internet over at Memorial Hall. But I thought I'd bring it up. Long-term interest went down fourteen point six percent due to the previous treasurer's renegotiating some of the loans and for a net gain to us of about eighty thousand this year and going forward. Retirement contribution went up five point two percent. That budget's around five million, I believe. School district went up three percent. They also did zero increase in expenses. The three percent was contractual obligations for the teachers. Eighty-seven percent or so of their budget is salary. And special education is over five and a half million. These are non-funded mandates that we have to do. So we held them to three percent, which I thought was really good. And they cooperated very well. Blackstone Valley came in at four point two percent. It was about a sixty thousand dollar increase. We have a hundred and thirty-two students going to Blackstone Valley, which is the second largest in the thirteen towns. And we don't have a problem paying for our kids. Workers' comp went up ten percent. And the big one, health insurance, went up twelve percent. Our health insurance is about eleven million dollars. Twelve percent is a big number. So, that's the highlights. The total budget increase was three point six percent. All right. Let's get to the articles for tonight. Can you guys see that? Recommended funding for the articles, all of them but one will come out of free cash. One of them for the highway department will come out of excess levy capacity. And we will transfer, if approved, nine hundred thousand out of the short-term stabilization account to go towards the youth commission or the youth center renovation and bond four million dollars, if it passes tonight. This is all assuming everything is going to pass. If it doesn't, we'll make adjustments. All right. Back in February, when we did the school, we talked about the long-term debt schedule. If we, when we added the school, we said, what's the worst-case scenario going forward? So, we added the youth center at two million. It's actually going to be four. We added the parks department of a million for a field, and that's probably going to be closer to two. And we still have Godfrey Brook to deal with, and that could be up to five. So that's a total of ten million to be added to, possibly added to the debt schedule on top of the school that we added in February. Again, this is what we showed in February to justify sixty million dollar debt, or actually thirty-four million dollar debt for the school. As you can see, the stabilization account, I can't point it out, I don't know how to do that, in year two thousand twenty-two drops to nine million, and it goes down a little bit and then comes back up. And the way the plan that we put in place will work is that every year we'll put five hundred thousand to stabilization, and then we'll take the net difference from the three point five million dollar debt limit and take it out of stabilization account. So we maintain a stabilization account going forward for the next twenty years of a good number. Now, if we add ten million dollars more debt, the numbers change significantly. So, we have to be very careful when we add long-term debt to the debt. To the debt, and the finance committee, selectmen. Okay. So, when this body is asked to approve long-term debt, the finance committee will show you from this schedule what, how it will affect stabilization account. Stabilization account is very important because it affects the lower the stabilization account, it affects our bond rating, which means we have to pay more when we bond projects. So again, very careful when we do this. All right. Recommendations going forward. Budget increase three point six percent, which you all have. Limit debt service to three point five million using stabilization to cover the difference. Maintain the infrastructure, buildings and roads. And we're going to recommend to the selectmen that we put a moratorium. If everything passes tonight, we're going to ask for a moratorium on capital, long-term capital expenditures for a while until some of the debt comes off and we can afford to put it on. Thank you.
Are there any other committee reports? Steve Johnson.
Test, test, all right. Yeah, lights on. All right. So I just wanted to let you know. Standing one. Hello. So no new information has come to light that would change the report for the C.I.C. that was mailed out with your warrant. So that's all stays the same. We were also, after working with the selectman chairman, will be passing over article thirty-two when that comes around. So, short and sweet.
Any other committee reports? If not, the question comes upon article two. Mr. Carroll.
Good evening. Dennis Carroll, chairman of the personnel board. I move that the town vote to amend the wage and salary schedule of the Wage and Salary Administration Plan by establishing new position grades and salary levels as recommended by the personnel board for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand fourteen, as follows.
Motion made and seconded. We dispense with the reading of the rest of the motion if it exactly appears in the warrant, which all town meeting members have a copy of. Is it, Mr. Carroll?
It is the same, except that the former Assistant Town Treasurer, Legal Assistant and Administrative Assistant Board of Health, which were duplicate entries, have been removed from grade six and grade five respectively. And the percentage for grandfathering of persons serving in hourly, non-rated or miscellaneous positions has been corrected from one percent to two percent.
Can you point that out in the, in the motion that we have before us?
If you look at the Assistant Town Treasurer, you'll see an entry for grade eight.
What section is it? Is it A, B, C, D, E?
I believe it's, it's in G.
C?
C.
Okay. I'm sorry. The motion I have is correct, but does everybody have the corrected motion in front of them? I don't think they do. That's what I'm trying to...
No, they don't.
Okay.
And the other position is the Administrative Assistant.
I'm sorry, Pat. Just go back. In section C, it's what position, what grade?
The duplicate is the grade six entry for Assistant Town Treasurer.
Assistant Town Treasurer, okay. Grade six. You're striking that?
No, that one's being removed.
Okay.
And the other one is grade five for the Assistant Board of Health.
Administrative Assistant Board of Health. You're striking that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other changes?
The only other change was the grandfathering of persons serving in hourly and non-rated or miscellaneous positions has been corrected from one percent to two percent.
And where is that in the motion? At the end?
Yeah, that's at the very end.
At the very end? Were we talking about, as employed in a salary or hourly rated positions, base rate of pay effective as of June thirty, two thousand fourteen, exceeds the maximum pay authorized for his or her position set forth above, shall continue to receive his or her current rate of pay for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, but increased by a factor of one percent?
It's from one percent to two percent.
It's already at two percent? In the motion that we have before? I mean, in the warrant that the members have?
The very bottom.
Oh, at the very bottom. All right. Continuing, as employees, an employee in an hourly, non-rated or miscellaneous position or an election worker whose base rate of pay effective as of June thirty, two thousand fourteen, exceeds the maximum pay authorized for his or her position set forth above, shall continue to receive his or her current rate of pay for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, but increased by a factor of two percent. Is that correct? An employee, okay. Any questions on the motion as presented by Mr. Carroll with the changes that you have in your warrant that you had before you? If not, Mr. Carroll.
Yes, we'd like a favorable vote on this. We think it's a fair and equitable increase for the employees of the town. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? Recommendation, finance committee is favorable. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article three.
Mr. Moderator?
Selectman Di Bartolomérez.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by section one oh eight of chapter forty-one of the general laws as follows. Town clerk, fiscal year fifteen, seventy-seven thousand, eight ninety-six. Tax collector, seventy-seven thousand, eight ninety-six. Assessor chairman, seventy-four, twenty-eight. Assessor member, sixty-six, fifty-eight. Highway surveyor, ninety-one thousand, four, four, four. Tree watering, sixty-four, eleven. Selectman chairman, eighty-four, sixty-five. Selectman members, seventy-five, twenty-one. Vernon Grove trustee clerk, thirty-six, oh, one. Board of Health chairman, twenty-four, twenty-three. Board of Health member, twenty-one, seventeen. Sewer commissioner's chairman, twenty-four, twenty-three. Sewer commissioner members, twenty-one, seventeen. Park commissioner chairman, twenty-four, twenty-three. Park commissioner members, twenty-one, seventeen. Planning board, twenty-four, twenty-three. Planning board members, twenty-one, seventeen. And moderator, twenty-three, twenty-nine.
Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Does any voter care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, this is a two percent increase for all these positions over fiscal year fourteen. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? At this point, I should remind, because I know there are some new attendees here. Any voter has a right to, any registered voter has a right to speak on any motion that is before the body. All you have to do is raise your hand, yell out, "Mr. Moderator", hopefully I'll hear you or see you and recognize you at that time. You have to be a registered voter. If you're not a registered voter, then you would require the unanimous consent of the body to address the meeting. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article four. Chairman Chain.
We had an error in the budget, so... I move town meeting, receive the report of finance committee as amended, and that the moderator inquire if any voter wishes to consider any item separately, that if any voter so wishes, he or she shall ask the moderator to remove this item from the report. And when this is done, that the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer, we indicated in the report, the amount recommended by the finance committee report as amended, and that the meeting shall then consider the items which have been removed from the report by taking up each item individually.
Okay. Can you point out to the members the amendment to the motion to the budget?
Yes, I can. Finance committee got a three percent raise, which wasn't in here. And item, line item number five, one, one, zero, for the moderator of one fourteen, was twenty-three, oh, six, and we just approved twenty-three, twenty-nine.
See, I thought you were going to reduce it by one percent. Okay. Must be doing a poor job. All right. Where's the other change?
When he does a better job, we'll give him that increase.
At least I read the report. Does any voter care to remove any line item from the budget? Mr. Visconti.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, my name is Mike Visconti, town meeting member from precinct eight. Mr. Moderator, I would like to speak on all of the line items, remove them all, and talk about them all together, as opposed to separately. And to that end, I would motion to amend the article as presented in the following way. If it's okay with the moderator, I would ask...
Go ahead. You're going to read it?
Well, I was going to, partially. Part of what I'm doing is reading.
You're going to read, as I understand, you want to remove all the line items, and you want to present an amendment to the motion, which would what?
I would like to amend the motion in the following way. And that is as follows. To delete all line item dollar amounts in the column entitled FY two thousand fifteen, proposed budget. And what I was going to say was, all of you have been given the spreadsheet of the budget line items. If you would like to refer to that, you will see a column labeled Proposed FY two thousand fifteen, Proposed Budget.
Budget. I would like to delete all of the line item dollar amounts in that column, and I would like to, I'm sorry, I would like to replace those with, and to replace those with all line item dollar amounts as they appear in the column entitled FY 2014 Final Article Four Budget, which will render the FY 2015 Proposed Budget equal to the FY 2014 Budget, which will effectively...
Okay, I think you're going beyond what you're, you're not reading what you presented. I think your amendment is to delete all line item dollar amounts in the column entitled Fiscal Year 2015 Proposed Budget, and replace them with all line item dollar amounts as they appear in the column entitled Fiscal Year 2014 Final Article Four Budget, which will render the fiscal year 2015 Budget equal to the fiscal year 2014 Budget with 0.0% increase.
Exactly. Thank you.
All right. Any vote to care to be heard on the amendment? Mr. Visconti.
Each year, we are presented with a budget, and the assumption, I believe, is that this body will rubber stamp the budget line item amounts, which is exactly what happens. The proposed budget this year calls for a three-plus percent increase. Please keep in mind that this far exceeds the Consumer Price Index, which is the generally accepted measurement of inflation, which was one and one-half percent this past year. So we are doubling that plus in our budget, or the proposed budget. I have personally prepared and administered numerous multimillion-dollar budgets for many different organizations. My assignments have always been, "Mike, come back to us with a level-funded, level-service budget and somehow make it work. No increase." Now, in some cases, this meant, and I'm not crying, but in some cases, this meant that the line item that included my own personal compensation had to be reduced to effectively balance the rest of the budget, and I see no reason why that cannot be done in this We have averaged, over the last five years, for our senior citizens, and our seniors and our retirees who are dependent on Social Security benefits, over the last five years, the average increase in Social Security benefits has been just under 1.5%, while in the last five years, our budgets for this town have increased dramatically in, above that, above that percentage. Do we really care about our seniors and our veterans who have to struggle to get by to save their homes and put food on their tables with a 1.5% increase when the proposed budget exceeds 3%? I believe we do not. I'm asking this body to please put aside your rubber stamp for one night, approve this motion as amended, and, I'm sorry, approve this motion to amend, and subsequently, the motion as amended. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any other vote to care to be heard on the amendment to the motion? Mr. Chain.
Ladies and gentlemen, with all due respect to the previous speaker, this committee is not a rubber stamp committee. We spend four months vetting this budget. We propose or recommend to department heads what we feel is a reasonable number, increase or not, to go forward to this town meeting. We have contractual obligations, and 87% of the budget is salaried personnel, so most of them have contracts: teachers, fire, police, library, clerks, et cetera. Most of those contracts are three-year contracts, so we are obligated under those contracts to fulfill them. There are times when we've come before you, and the big one I can remember is when Governor Romney was governor, and he cut our state aid by $3 million, and we went back to the departments and said, "You're taking a 3%, 5% cut." We went to the school department, and they had to cut their budget $2 million. We laid off people. When it's necessary to do that, we do that, because, as I said earlier, we're a conservative group. Right now, it's not necessary to do that. We do have the money, we feel that it's important to take care of our employees, we did ask them to do a 0% increase in expenses, and most of them did that. There were a few exceptions, as I pointed out. We have health insurance that goes up 11%, 12%, I mean, it's almost $2 million. How do you handle that with a 0% increase? You can't. You've got to cover the health insurance. Retirement you have to cover. Workman's comp you have to cover. Debt service you have to cover. So at the end of the day, a 3.6% increase in budget is more than a reasonable increase in budget, and if we felt that we wanted or should do a level-funded budget, because a level-service budget is totally different, a level-funded budget, we would ask for that. But right now, we don't have to do that. So I recommend you defeat this amendment.
Any other vote to care to be heard on the amendment to the motion? Mr. Visconti again.
Town meeting members, Mr. Moderator, my name is Mike Visconti, Precinct Eight, town meeting member. Contract obligations, salary increases, it sounds to me like money is being spent before it is approved by this body. Once again, back to the old rubber stamp. Please do not rubber stamp this article. Please approve the amendment to the article. 3.6% is unacceptable. 0% is doable. And by the way, if any department or board would like any assistance in funding a 0% budget, I will volunteer my services free of charge to assist them if they would like. Thank you.
Any other vote to be, care to be heard on the amendment to the motion? If not, the question comes upon the amendment to the motion. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The amendment to the motion is defeated. Question now comes upon the motion as originally presented, to receive the report of the Finance Committee as amended, and to vote to raise and appropriate said amounts in the report of the Finance Committee. Any vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article Five. Town Council Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of the revenue of the financial year beginning July 1st, 2014, in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 4, and to issue a note or notes therefore payable within one year, and to renew any note or notes as may be given for a period of less than one year, in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 17.
Motion made and seconded, the town vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of the revenue of the financial year beginning July 1st, 2014, in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 4, and to issue a note or notes therefore payable within one year, and to renew any note or notes as may be given for a period of less than one year, in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 17. Any vote to care to be heard? Mr. Moody.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, most of you will recognize this as an annual vote. We vote this every year. This is so that the treasurer will be able to borrow money in anticipation of taxes, what we refer to as tax anticipation notes, in order that the town may continue to function on a regular basis. Thank you.
Finance Committee recommendation is?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any other vote to care to be heard on the motion? If not, the question comes upon the motion, since it requires borrowing in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 17, it requires a two-thirds vote. Since no one spoke in opposition, I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, then the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor of the motion as presented manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Six.
Mr. Moderator, I have voted to town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take charge of all legal proceedings for or against the town.
Motion made and seconded, the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take charge of all legal proceedings for or against the town. Does any vote to care to be heard? If not, Finance Committee recommendation is?
Favorable.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Seven. Attorney Murray.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to expend from funds received by the town as fines for parking violations during fiscal year 2015 such sum or sums of money as are necessary to pay the costs and expenses of collecting such fines and otherwise complying with the provisions of Section 20A of Chapter 90 of the General Laws during said fiscal year.
Motion made and seconded, the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to expend from funds received by the town as fines for parking violations during fiscal year 2015 such sum or sums of money as are necessary to pay the costs and expenses of collecting such fines and otherwise complying with the provisions of Section 20A of Chapter 90 of the General Laws during said fiscal year. Any vote to care to be heard? Attorney Murray.
Self-explanatory. It allows the town to use the funds collected from the parking fines to operate that department, support the enforcement of parking restrictions, including handicap violations.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Eight. Town Council Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer and/or tax collector to enter into a compensating balance agreement or agreements for fiscal year 2015 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53F of the General Laws.
Motion made and seconded, the town vote to authorize the town treasurer and/or tax collector to enter into a compensating balance agreement or agreements for fiscal year 2015 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53F of the General Laws. Town Council Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, you recognize this as an annual vote, compensating balance agreement. Agreements are something that have been utilized in the past in order to get the best possible rates. They haven't been utilized in a number of years, but we take this vote every year. Speaking to the treasurer earlier, she's considering looking into that as being possibly advantageous again this year, so it's, I commend your vote on that this year. Thank you.
Finance Committee recommendation is?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Nine. Selectman Buckley.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote for fiscal year 2015 to authorize any and all departments to utilize without further appropriation any amounts received from insurance companies or other third parties as damages or payment for damages to any town-owned property for the purpose of repairing or replacing such property, or as deemed appropriate by the Board of Selectmen, directly depositing such funds to the municipal building, property, and insurance fund established by the voter Article 45 at the June 11th, 1990 annual town meeting.
Motion made and seconded, the town vote for fiscal year 2015 to authorize any and all departments to utilize without further appropriation any amount received from insurance companies or other third parties as damages or payments for damage to any town-owned property for the purpose of repairing or replacing such property, or as deemed appropriate by the Board of Selectmen, directly depositing such funds to the municipal building and property insurance fund established by vote under Article 45 of the June 11th, 1990 annual town meeting. Does any vote to care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator?
Buckley.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, this is a recurring annual vote which will authorize departments to receive and utilize money from insurance companies or other third parties paid in compensation for damages caused to town property, and it's used for the purpose of repairing or replacing that property without further appropriation. Without this vote, amounts recovered over $10,000 for damage to property would have to be paid into the general fund with later appropriation by town meeting to effectuate those repairs. This vote will allow departments to proceed smoothly and quickly, repair those damages in a timely fashion. I urge your support. Thank you.
Does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Ten. Attorney Murray.
I move that the town vote to authorize all persons, boards, or agencies of the town otherwise authorized to contract for or on behalf of the town during fiscal year 2015 to enter into such contracts or agreements for up to five years, except in the case of contracts or agreements dealing with real estate, which may be up to 10 years.
A motion made and seconded, the town vote to authorize all persons, boards, or agencies of the town otherwise authorized to contract for or on behalf of the town during fiscal year 2015 to enter into such contracts or agreements for up to five years, except in the case of contracts or agreements dealing with real estate, which may be for up to 10 years. Any vote to care to be heard? Attorney Murray.
Without this article, contracts are limited to three years, which for some things like copy machines, vehicles, are not within the industry norm, and 10 years for real estate makes handling matters such as that more efficient.
Finance Committee recommendation is?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Eleven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote for fiscal year 2015 pursuant to Section 4 of Chapter 73 of the Acts of 1986 to approve an additional exemption of up to 100% of the currently allowed exemptions for all eligible real estate tax exemptions under General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5.
Motion made and seconded, the town vote for fiscal year 2015 pursuant to Section 4, Chapter 73 of the Acts of 1986, to approve an additional exemption of up to 100% of the currently allowed exemptions for all eligible real estate tax exemptions under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5. Does any vote to care to be heard? Selectman DeBattolomaius.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, what this article is, is we're helping out the elderly with their exemptions, 100%, disabled veterans, all other veterans with disabilities, and blind people with their taxes. With all four programs, we're helping out about 190 people with their taxes, and this is something that we've been doing for many years now, so appreciate your support on this article.
Does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable recommendations. Any vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Twelve. Town Council Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer to accept deeds in lieu of foreclosure pursuant to Chapter 60, Section 77(c) of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Motion made and seconded, the town vote to authorize the town treasurer to accept deeds in lieu of foreclosure pursuant to Chapter 60, Section 77(c) of the Massachusetts General Laws. Does any vote to care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, again, an annual vote that we take. This is because the process of foreclosure, even on simple parcels, can cost up to $1,000 through land court. Frequently, the taxpayer has no interest and is willing to give the town a deed and save the taxpayers the money and going through that process in land court.
Finance Committee recommendation is?
Favorable.
Favorable. Does any vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Thirteen. Town Council Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote... Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $7,604.72 from the excess and deficiency account, consistent with the funds raised from vending machines in the Milford School District, said sum to be spent on the jurisdiction of the school committee for purposes of student activities not funded in the school department budget.
Motion made in second of the town vote to transfer the sum of $7,604.72 from the excess and deficiency account, consistent with the funds raised from vending machines in the Milford School District, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee for purposes of student activities not funded in the school department budget. Does any vote occur to be heard? Mr. Moderator? Town Council Moody?
Ladies and gentlemen, again, you've seen this over the last few years as an annual vote. Usually, I'm presenting it on behalf of the school committee, because it was discovered some years ago, as you may recall, that the money couldn't be spent directly and had to go into the general fund and then be, it has to be an article in the warrant to appropriate that money that's received from the vending machines. The purpose is the same as always, to utilize the money for the student activities accounts, and that's the amount that was brought in this past year.
Finance Committee recommendation is?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article fourteen. Town Council Moody?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to establish revolving funds for certain departments under general laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and fourteen, with the specific receipts credited to each fund, the purposes for which each fund may be spent, and the maximum amount that may be spent from each fund for the fiscal year as follows: For the council on aging, for the revenue source being receipts derived from use on council on aging vans, to defray the cost of providing transportation for the elderly and disabled, with a spending limit of $16,000. For the library trustees, for the loss of, damage to library property, for the revenue sources, the restitution for damages to and loss of library property, to be used for the replacement cost of such, the spending limit is $5,000. For the zoning board of appeals, revolving fund is for their receipts, the receipts are those from the filing of applications with the zoning board of appeals, and the funds to be expended, processing of applications before the zoning board of appeals, and the spending limit on that is $40,000. For the youth commission, it's the youth commission operations revolving fund, and the revenue sources, the receipts, grants, and gifts derived from the operation of the youth commission, to be used for activities and to defray the cost of providing youth activities and services, and the spending limit on that one is set at $150,000. For the North Purchase Cemetery, for the Park Commission, for the North Purchase Cemetery revolving account, the sources, the receipts from the operation of the North Purchase Cemetery, and the funds are to be spent as necessary for the operations of the cemetery with a spending limit of $10,000. And finally, for the commission on disabilities, the commission on disability revolving fund, the sources, all the receipts, grants, and gifts from the operation of the commission on disabilities, to be used to fund the activities and to defray the cost of providing services with a spending limit of $5,000.
Motion made in second of the town vote to establish revolving funds for certain town departments under Massachusetts general laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and one-half, for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and fourteen, with the specific receipts credited to each fund, the purposes for which each fund may be spent, and the maximum amount that may be spent from each fund for the fiscal year as follows: Council on Aging, the revenue source being the receipts derived from the use of, on the, from use on council of aging van, to defray the cost of providing transportation for the elderly, a limit of $16,000. The lost or damaged library property to be spent by the library trustees, the revenue sources, the restitution for damages to and loss of library property, and it's used to replace the lost or damaged property, up to $5,000. The zoning board of appeals, from the receipts from the filing of the applications with the ZBA, the funds to be used to, to be expended for processing of the applications before the ZBA, up to a spending limit of $40,000. The youth commission operations, to be spent by the youth commission, the revenue sources, the receipts, grants, and gifts derived from the operation of the youth commission, and it's for the activities of and to defray the cost of providing youth activities and services, up to $150,000. The North Purchase Cemetery, under the jurisdiction of the Park Commission, from the receipts from the operation of the cemetery, to spend for the operation of the cemetery, up to $10,000. And the commission on disabilities, from the receipts, grants, and gifts from the operation of the commission on disabilities, to fund the activities and to defray the cost of providing services, up to $5,000. Does any vote occur to be heard? Town Council Moody?
Ladies and gentlemen, as you recall, prior years, we would pass this out. Have it on your seats. We just didn't do that this year, which caused us to have to read too much. In the future, we'll try to do that. This is a consolidation of what used to be six separate articles that we would go through for these revolving accounts. These are precisely the same as they were set for last year, with precisely the same spending limits, and I urge your favorable vote on them. Thank you.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Does any vote occur to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article fifteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the excess and deficiency account a sum of money in the amount of $45,000, said sum to be added to the fiscal year 2014 Veterans Department Budget, line item number five-four-three-dash-fifty-three-hundred.
Motion made in second of the town vote to transfer from the excess and deficiency account a sum of money in the amount of $45,000, said sum to be added to the fiscal year 2014 Veterans Department Budget, line item number five-four-three-dash-five-three-zero-zero. Does any vote occur to be heard? Mr. Deportoloméis?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, the reason for the $45,000, this is the coverage through the end of June, during, when times get tough, there's an increase in veterans going to the Veterans Department, and with that, it costs more benefits, so that's what this article is for. And whatever the town spends, the state reimburses seventy-five percent to the town. So hopefully, you'll approve this, because it's a great article, and we're helping out our veterans. Thank you.
Does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Does any vote occur to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article sixteen. Mr. Manini?
I moved that the town vote to amend Section one-point-one-five of the zoning bylaw relating to site plans as follows.
Motion made in second, we dispense with the reading of the remainder of the motions if it is exactly as appears in the warrant that all town meeting members have. Is it, Mr. Manini? Yes, it is. Any vote to care to be heard in the motion to dispense with the reading of the remainder of the motion? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Does the planning board have a recommendation? Mr. Manini?
Yes. Planning board gives a favorable recommendation for these articles, for the zoning board.
For the motion? Yes. Finance Committee?
Refer to sponsor.
Referring to sponsor, which is the planning board. Does any other vote occur to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. Any amendment to the zoning bylaw requires a two-thirds vote. Since no one spoke in opposition to the motion as presented, I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, the individual precincts will be polled. I'm in no way encouraging you to vote for the motion, but it just will speed up the meeting, since no one spoke in opposition. All those in favor of the motion as presented manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article seventeen.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts general law, Chapter forty, Section fifteen, to transfer the care, custody, and jurisdiction of the following five town-owned parcels to the Milford Conservation Commission. Assessors map nineteen, block zero, lot fourteen, fourteen-point-one acres. Assessors map twenty, block zero, lot eleven, ten-point-four. Assessors map twenty, block sixty-three, lot one, eleven-point-nine-one. Assessors map twenty-seven, zero, lot fifteen, forty-two-point-two. Assessors map thirty-four, zero, lot ninety-three, zero-point-one-four, for a total amount of acres of seventy-eight-point-seventy-five.
Motion made in second of the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, Chapter forty, Section fifteen, to transfer the care, custody, and jurisdiction of the following five town-owned parcels to the Milford Conservation Commission. Assessors map nineteen, block zero, lot fourteen, area fourteen-point-one acres. Assessors map twenty, block zero, lot eleven, ten-point-four acres. Assessors map twenty, block sixty-three, lot one, eleven-point-ninety-one acres. Assessors map twenty-seven, block zero, lot fifteen, forty-two-point-two acres. Assessors map thirty-four, block zero, lot ninety-three, area point-one-four acres. Does any vote occur to be heard? Mr. Deportoloméis?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, this involves seventy-eight-point-seventy-five acres. This will be added to the one hundred and twenty acres already under the control of the Conservation Commission, and that is Louisa Lake, the town forest, and also there's a piece of land that runs, the Charles River runs through it, and that's near Route four-ninety-five. The motion which I just made does not include any authority for the Board of Selectmen or the Conservation Commission to enter into a conservation restriction with the trustees of reservations or any other group. The motion simply takes those parcels of land, which are part of the overall two-hundred acres, and which are not already under the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction, and places them under the Conservation Commission. During the course of the many discussions that have taken place, we have come to understand the concerns that many have in terms of the use of a conservation restriction and the assignment of a conservation restriction to a third party. We also understand there are many questions and concerns about what the content of such a conservation restriction might be. I deemed it best to pass over the conservation restriction at this time, so that it can, if deemed appropriate, undergo further study and explanation in the future. During the process of discussions over this article, all parties agreed that placement of all the parcels, as some are already under the custody, control, and jurisdiction of all the parcels, as some already are, would be an appropriate action under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. This is all this motion seeks to do. Again, I want to reemphasize that this motion does not authorize a conservation restriction in any way, and if this were to be considered again, it would have to be vetted fully and brought back to this body for your consideration. So hopefully, you'll consider this article. Many people have spoken to us, and at this time, we would like to place this land under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. Thank you.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Does any other vote occur to be heard? Yes, Mr. Aberson.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, coming before you tonight, I, to give you a little historical perspective on Conservation Commission and natural resources protection in the town of Milford. I was hired in nineteen seventy-one to be the first town planner in the town, and my first assignment was to work with the town engineer at the Conservation Commission and the Worcester County Conservation District to prepare a natural resources plan. We worked with the Mass- Massachusetts Resource Protection Technical Team to do an inventory of all the sites in the town that we should protect from development. This team included a number of representatives from state and county agencies, and in nineteen seventy-two, this inventory was published with recommendations for future resource protection. Conservation Commission began to implement its recommendations, and after numerous public meetings, developed a natural resources plan that the town published in nineteen seventy-six. I left the town to get a master's degree in environmental planning, but until nineteen seventy-seven, I was on the Conservation Commission, serving as vice chairman and chairman. The plan we approved in nineteen seventy-six included eight areas of town that we felt needed protection from development. Some of these areas are still protected, mostly because they are still floodplains. Some recommendations have been completed: the Upper Charles River Hiking Trail, the Plains Park over the former landfill, and Louisa Lake project. Other areas have not done so well. The Fletcher Quarry area has in part become Walden Woods. Parts of the Mill River watershed along Fisk Mill Pond have either been developed or under consideration for development. The area that's under consideration tonight was included in the report, and our recommendations were for the area to be protected and developed as trail sites and picnic areas. We also recommended that the town acquire the granite building on Duller Street for the Conservation Commission and Historical Commission to establish a museum and offices for both. This would have been a great focal point along the trail. As you now know, this has become a school bus parking, storage area. So some of the sites have been protected and some have not. A major site, a large site that was not saved, was called Area Seven, the Haskell Quarry Site. Parts of this area were already owned by the town and under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. I'd like to read a little bit from the original plan to describe the area. "Two open-pit quarries are located on this town-owned property at the junctions of Routes eighty-five and four-ninety-five. Investigations found one used for swimming and the other for a dump, which has since been stopped by the Conservation Commission. Recognized nationwide for its high quality and unique color, these quarries should be set aside as reservations for general public and historical landmarks. The adjacent routes provide an easy access for the public, and the existing trails crisscrossing the area allows one to once again enjoy the beauty of nature, its color variety, and growth habitats. This could be also an excellent location for ski-mobils and minibikes, without causing any further noise pollution. The commission's recommended actions were: clean out the quarries, add plants to beautify, construct safety walks for the general public to view the quarries, picnic areas, hiking trails, snowmobiles, and minibike trails. Swimming was obviously to be discouraged because of the steep slopes of the quarries." Implementation was supposed to be done by the Conservation Commission and the selectmen and the snowmobile club, whoever they are. I guess they still are around, I don't know. And the jurisdiction was the Conservation Commission. In case you haven't realized what this area is, this area is Fortune Boulevard. We recommended that the parkland would be completed by a target date of nineteen eighty. Years later, that target date would mean that Target would be built in that area. The question is, do we want to protect the area or not? Since the restriction is taken off the table tonight, I just want to propose that, however we proceed in this, that we look very closely at what kind of restrictions we can put on this to keep this kind of stuff from happening again, because we've tried back in seventy-six to preserve a lot of areas, and it didn't happen. Thank you very much.
Was it only forty-three years ago that I appointed you as the first town planner on the Board of Select? Mr. Aberson?
Mike Nofer, you appointed me as town planner.
Okay. Any other vote occur to be heard?
Mr. Moderator?
Voter in the back there.
Good evening, town meeting members. Noel Bontempo, Precinct Seven. I also sit on the Conservation Commission. Maybe it's a good idea that we take a step back from this, but I do want to point out a few things to you, and I want to reiterate that the Conservation Commission itself rejected the responsibility that is now being proposed with this article. We voted unanimously for the original version of this, to transfer oversight, in effect, of these very sensitive parcels of land, yes, to a third party, to give us additional insulation. I also want to point out that the Conservation Commission is an appointed board, subject to the jurisdiction, any influence, of the appointing authority, which happens to be, of course, the Board of Selectmen. The, at least as far as I know, the original proposal was also supported by the Board of Health, because, obviously, the aquifer and sensitive nature of this area. The function of the Conservation Commission, by the way, and I think that the previous speaker really bore this out with his historical perspective, our function is to enforce the Wetland Protection Act, not to preserve open space. If a proposal comes before us that fits within the parameters of the Wetlands Protection Act and our local bylaws enacted in pursuance of the Wetland Protection Act, then that's what we- what we determine. Does it fit? I think it's kind of ironic, I was hearing in the media, the local media, concerns about transferring control and not trusting future bodies. Well, that's very ironic, because just within this week, we had a town leader change his position on this very issue, supported it, and then changed his mind. And I'm sure for those of you who are opposed to this provision and how it was originally presented, that may seem a victory, but wait till the shoe's on the other foot. I also, I'd also want to say that about two decades ago, we took a piece of property in downtown Milford. That property had been deeded to the town on the understanding that it was to house or be the location for a monument. That land was deeded to the town of Milford by Mrs. Draper, with the proviso that the statue that honors her husband be placed there and no other uses for it. And eventually, with the passage of time and the passage of Mrs. Draper, what do we have there now? Now, I'm not saying that the memorial to our veterans is wrong, okay? But what is the truth? The truth is that when we, as a town meeting, debated whether to put that monument there, who was there to speak for Mrs. Draper? No one. No one could legally speak to her or speak for her. So I think we probably should take a step back, vet this, figure out what the restrictions are that we want to put in, but I, in the future, I strongly urge that that sort of insulation, extra insulation, be enacted to protect this area from the vagaries. Because I can hear the arguments. I may not be around thirty, forty years from now, but you're going to hear, "Well, you know, it's just a small parcel." It's just a small piece, it's off on the edge, and we can do without it. It's not going to violate the integrity of our scheme. Or the other argument that we'll hear is, "Well, you know, the technology has improved so much today that the impact is going to be minimal." And then what the biggest irony of it all is going to be, is that someone will get up here and they will declare to you, "You know what? I don't think in two thousand and fourteen they really meant to protect that area, because it would have been so simple just to turn it over to a reservation of trust." That would be tremendously ironic. Thank you for your attention.
Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Visconti.
Town meeting members, my name is Mike Visconti, town meeting member from Precinct Eight. As the previous speaker so eloquently expressed, approval of this article really affords no protection for this land whatsoever with respect to future development. The Conservation Commission, by law, if a development was proposed for this land, would have, it would have to go through them as a matter of course. So there is really nothing to be gained by approving this article. The Conservation Commission will have the final say on whether this proposed development complies with the Wetlands Protection Act or not. It has nothing to say about or cannot control whether it remains open space or whether it is developed, only to the extent that it complies with the Wetland Protection Act. If you want to seriously consider maintaining open space in this town, this article is not the way to go about it. The presenter of this article indicated that everybody came together and approved this. I'm wondering if this body can be enlightened as to who everybody that he referred to is that came together in agreement with this article. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? Town Council Moody.
Just so that all can understand what this transfer of jurisdiction is, it does create a higher degree of protection for the land, period. I mean, it simply does. Right now, the land is not under any set jurisdiction, so any proposal can come from virtually any direction and come before this body for a vote. What putting it under the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction does is that can't happen now. If the Board of Selectmen or a future Board of Selectmen has some harebrained scheme they want to bring forward, they can't, because it's the Conservation Commission controls that. Conservation Commission isn't free to sell it, they're not free to develop it, they can't spend any money on it without coming to this body. But it's another degree of protection that prevents proposals that might not otherwise be acceptable from coming forward. So again, I don't know how else to say it, except it is a higher degree of protection than is there right now for this land. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Duluzio.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, can you hear me? First let me say that it's a privilege to serve as a member of the Open Space Working Group appointed by the Selectmen to work on this issue. If you have been following recent Selectmen, Planning Board and Finance Committee meetings and news articles, you would have observed that I have been outspoken in support of permanently protecting these five lots of seventy-nine acres in conjunction with the three adjoining lots of a hundred and twenty-one acres currently, which are currently under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. I was and am still in favor of a solution that would achieve more certainty in permanent preservation and provide opportunities to solicit outside resources to improve public access, to develop the land's full potential for passive recreation activities and to improve the wildlife habitat. A vigorous and spirited debate was enjoined, but in the end, the more prominent solution was met with sufficient opposition to warrant a step back to the motion before us. However, let me not diminish the importance of the step I hope we take to place this land under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. If one really believes in preserving some land in its natural state for future generations to experience and enjoy, this action is long overdue. It has been said that there is a big difference in supporting an idea and committing to it. Hopefully, we will make that commitment tonight. If not this land, which land? If not now, when? I strongly urge you to vote for this motion.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented, that the town vote pursuant to Chapter Forty, Section Fifteen, to transfer the care, custody and jurisdiction of five town-owned parcels to the Milford Conservation Commission. The transfer of land from one board to another requires a two-thirds vote. Since there was opposition expressed, I'll take a standing vote. All those in favor of the motion will rise and remain standing until counted by the All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct One.
Ten in favor, five opposed.
Precinct One reports ten in favor, five opposed. Precinct Two.
Fifteen in favor, one opposed.
Precinct Two reports fifteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct Three.
Twelve in favor, five opposed.
Precinct Three reports twelve in favor, five opposed. Precinct Four.
Sixteen in favor, one opposed.
Precinct Four reports sixteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct Five.
Eighteen in favor, one opposed.
Precinct Five reports eighteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct Six.
Eighteen in favor, one opposed.
Precinct Six reports eighteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct Seven.
Twenty-three in favor, one opposed.
Precinct Seven reports twenty-three in favor, five opposed. Precinct Eight.
Twenty-three in favor, one opposed.
Precinct Eight reports fourteen in favor, four opposed at large.
Fifteen in favor, none opposed.
Precinct, or at large reports fifteen in favor, none opposed. One forty-one, having voted in the affirmative, twenty-three in the negative, the necessary two-thirds has been acquired and the motion is passed. Article eighteen. Selectman Buckley.
Moderator, clarification?
Point of order?
On our seventeen, why is not the bottom half correct?
The motion as presented, in other words, you have a warrant that tells you what's going to be discussed. The person that presents the motion, it doesn't have to be as the article, so what he did was delete the second and third paragraph and our, just had, that's why I repeated it. Yes, Mr. Buckley.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized by the Board of Selectmen for consultant services to produce engineering drawings, plans and specifications, along with grant writing associated with the FY twenty-fifteen CDBG grant applications.
Motion made to second the town vote to transfer the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized by the Board of Selectmen for consultant services to produce engineering drawings, plans and specifications, along with grant writing associated with the fiscal year twenty-fifteen CDBG grant applications. What does CDBG stand for?
I was just going to explain that, Mr. Moderator. It's Community Development Block Grants.
Okay, Community Development Block Grant. Does any voter care to be heard? Mr. Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, for those of you who aren't familiar with the Community Development Block Grants, it's what has been done for years and largely impacted by Sue Clark, who was running that for years. It was sidewalk improvement, facade improvement. That's the Community Development Block Grant process that we've been participating with the state. This grant process has become increasingly more competitive, and the grant application requirements have also become more stringent. Towns must now submit engineering plans, specifications in addition to the traditional documents, and this is added work that cannot be covered with grant funds. This is a community's contribution. If the town fails to provide this level of detailed planning and documentation in future grant rounds, we run the risk of receiving low scores that are not as competitive as other communities. Worse still, this is a distinct, there is a distinct possibility that our applications will not even be accepted. This upfront annual local match is a good investment in to assure that the town continue to receive grant money in the future, and I'd urge your support. Thank you very much.
The Finance Committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable recommendation. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those no, motion is carried unanimously. Article nineteen. Town Council Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to accept a gift of the following parcels of land. A parcel of land off the East Lee side of Cedar Street in Milford, Worcester County, being shown as proposed parcel fifteen dash zero dash twenty-two A on a plan entitled One Fifty-One Cedar Street, plan of land in Milford, Mass., scale forty feet to an inch, date October fifteenth, two thousand thirteen. Gary &amp; Howland, Inc., three thirty-three West Street, Milford, Mass. O one seven five seven, said proposed parcel fifteen oh, fifteen dash zero dash twenty-two A containing fifty-six thousand five hundred square feet, or one point three acres more or less, of land according to said plan, together with a parcel of land off the East Lee side of Cedar Street in Milford, Worcester County, being shown as proposed parcel fifteen dash zero dash ten A on plan of land entitled One Fifty-One Cedar Street, plan of land in Milford, Mass., scale forty feet to an inch, date October fifteenth, two thousand thirteen. Gary &amp; Howland, Inc., three thirty-three West Street, Milford, O one seven five seven, said proposed parcel fifteen dash zero dash ten A containing a hundred and fourteen thousand square feet, or two point six acres of land according to said plan.
Motion made to second to accept two parcels of land as described by Trudy Moody. The voter care to be heard, Trudy Moody.
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, the parcels that you see up there are outlined in red. Down below, you'll see Cedar Street, and you can tell in the interim, in the middle is what is now the bike trail and the water company, Easeman. Those were two continuous parcels of land until about a hundred and forty years ago, when the railroads came in and ran through there. And that separated out the back parcels, which have no access, they're not developable. The front parcels are now being redeveloped, there was an old house there that's being replaced, and another house is being built on the other front lot. And now the owner, it used to be in combination, has no need for those, doesn't want to keep them and wants to donate them to the town. And so everybody involved has said that's an acceptable idea. The Finance Committee raises a good question about, well, what if we didn't take them? Aren't they coming off the tax rolls? Yeah, they are, and the owners would stop paying taxes and we'd spend a couple of thousand dollars to foreclose. And these are but town-owned land, it makes sense from the town's perspective to own and control this land, so I commend it to you for an affirmative vote. Thank you.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Does any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. The acceptance of a gift only requires a majority vote, so all those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the total of two point nine million debt authorized by the Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional District School Committee on April seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, for costs of adding to equipping, reconstructing and making extraordinary repairs to the regional school, including all costs incidental and related thereto, with the town's apportioned share of debt payments computed in accordance with the regional agreement and commencing in fiscal year two thousand sixteen.
Motion made to second the town vote to approve the total two point nine million dollar debt authorization authorized by the Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional District School Committee on April seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, for costs of adding to equipping, reconstructing and making extraordinary repairs to the regional school, including all costs incidental and related thereto, with the town's apportioned share of debt payments computed in accordance with the regional agreement and commencing in fiscal year two thousand sixteen. Does any voter care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator, Dr. Fitzpatrick would like to address the party, of course, he's not a Milford resident.
Okay, Dr. Fitzpatrick is not a resident of Milford, though he was born and brought up in Milford. It requires unanimous consent. Does anyone object to hearing from Dr. Fitzpatrick? Hearing, no objection. He's recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members of my hometown, at this point, one of the unique aspects of regional directions and rules in which we operate demands that we secure two-thirds of our member communities in order to take favorable actions on debt activities. At this point, the following towns have either taken action in support or indicated to me through their finance committees and town managers that they expect to take favorable actions. Those communities are Northbridge, Upton, Bellingham, Blackstone, Grafton, Hope Dale, Millville, and hopefully, Milford. Nevertheless, assuring and acquiring eight communities to be in support out of thirteen does not meet the threshold necessary for us to borrow this money. So I ask the community to do what other communities did in two thousand and one. When the Finance Committee in Milford asked Valley Tech its vocational technical school to expand three new programs, reducing the exposure of the exodus of out-of-district tuition costs, particularly in the area of cosmetology and other programs, I went forth with the other communities and asked them to support that. Unanimously, they did so. This time, I was unsuccessful in securing nine or more of the communities to follow action. So I ask your vote, it has no financial impact, in my view, it is simply a vote of confidence for your vocational technical system and a message. When people support at Milford, Milford will also support the concept when other communities ask us to do that. Thank you very much.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-one.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw relating to life science.
science and scientific research uses as noted herein after.
A motion made in second, we dispense with the reading of the remainder of the motion if it's exactly as appears in the warrant the town meeting members have. Is it? There are no changes being proposed. Any vote again to be heard in the motion to dispense? If not, question comes upon the motion to dispense with the reading. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Does the Planning Board have a recommendation?
Yes. Pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noticed public hearing on April twenty-second, two thousand fourteen regarding the subject Article twenty-one, at which time it voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the town meeting.
Finance committee have a recommendation? Favorable. Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to amend the zoning bylaw relating to life science and scientific research used and noted herein by adding it in Section two point three use regulation, a reference to life science research and development and scientific research and development uses as follows. An amendment to the zoning bylaw requires a two-thirds vote. Again, I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor of the motion manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Next article, which is Article twenty-two. Selectman Murray.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $15,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be utilized by the Board of Selectmen for consultant services associated with a needs assessment and plan for the townwide geographic information system project.
Motion made in second, the town vote to transfer the sum of $15,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be utilized by the Board of Selectmen for consultant services associated with a needs assessment and plan for the townwide geographic information system project. Any vote again to be heard? Attorney Murray.
Since two thousand eleven, the town's web-based GIS tool has provided easy online access for residents and businesses to view aerial photos, natural resource information, as well as the assesses' maps and parcel information. However, a fully developed townwide GIS is now necessary to give town staff the ability to integrate map and analyze various types of information in detail. Given the upcoming stormwater mapping requirements, the need for a fully developed townwide GIS is now even more critical. A full GIS can be used for various applications by all town departments. It will help improve coordination among the departments and allow staff to efficiently view the relationships of pertinent information and link to operations and maintenance programs for asset management such as road conditions, utility locations, drainage locations, sign management, and so forth. This article funds a GIS needs assessment and implementation plan, which will result in a phased implementation plan, the estimated costs of each phase and hardware, software, and IT requirements.
Finance committee have a recommendation? Favorable. Any vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty-three. Mr. Manini.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Section three point two accessory buildings and uses of the zoning bylaws as follows, by deleting Section two point two point three, swimming pools, the second paragraph thereof relating to swimming pool fences.
Motion made in second, the town vote to amend Section three point two accessory buildings and uses of the zoning bylaw as follows, by deleting in Section three point two point three swimming pools, the second paragraph thereof relating to swimming pool fences. Does the Planning Board have a report?
Pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noticed public hearing on April twenty-second, two thousand fourteen regarding the subject of Article twenty-three, at which time it voted unanimously to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Is any vote again to be heard? Mr. Manini first.
This article just takes the purpose of fences out of the zoning bylaws, which it's not necessary because it's in the building code, and that's where the building code supersedes the bylaw. Thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? Vote from Precinct four.
Good evening. Mike Chan Pietro, Precinct four. As I understand it, you say that fences are going to be taken out of the zoning bylaws. Is that correct? And if so, the building code regulates fences that are six feet in height or higher. Anything else six feet in height or under, the building code does not regulate. Thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting in Section three point two point three swimming pools, the second paragraph relating to swimming pool fences. Again, I'll take a voice vote. If that's not unanimous, the individual precincts will be polled. If you want to vote against it, I'm not trying to discourage you. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Okay, all those in favor, rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All set? All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one. Precinct one reports fifteen in favor, none opposed. Precinct two. Precinct two reports twelve in favor, four opposed. Precinct three. Precinct three reports fifteen in favor, two opposed. Precinct four. Precinct four reports thirteen in favor, five opposed. Precinct five. Precinct five reports eighteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct six. Precinct six reports twenty in favor, one opposed. Precinct seven. Precinct seven reports twenty-eight in favor, zero opposed. Precinct eight. Precinct eight reports sixteen in favor, two opposed. At large? At large reports fifteen in favor, none opposed. One hundred fifty-three having voted in the affirmative, fifteen in the negative. The necessary two-thirds has been acquired. The motion is carried. Article twenty-four. Selectman Murray.
I move that the town vote appropriate a sum of money in the amount of five million eighty-three thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars, said some to be utilized for construction and related activity for full renovations of the Milford Youth Center and its facilities, including handicap accessibility and further, to meet that appropriation that the town transfer the sum of one hundred eighty-three thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars from the excess and deficiency account, together with the sum of nine hundred thousand from the stabilization count, and further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow the remaining sum of four million dollars pursuant to the provisions of GL Chapter forty-four, Section seven, or any other authority enabling.
A motion made in second, the town vote to appropriate a sum of money in the amount of five million eighty-three thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars, said some to be utilized for the construction and related activity for full renovations of the Milford Youth Center and its facilities, including handicap accessibility, and further to meet that appropriation that the town transfer the sum of one hundred eighty-three thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars from the excess and deficiency account, together with the sum of nine hundred thousand dollars from the stabilization account, and further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow the remaining sum of four million dollars pursuant to the provisions of GL, of General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, or any other authority enabling. Attorney Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, in September nineteen ninety-seven, the youth center opened its doors in the town of Milford. It was the product, it actually was a labor of love of the late J.D. Antonio and a handful of other very dedicated and caring volunteers who wanted the children of Milford to have a place that they could call their own. It operated very well under the auspices of the National Guard. They occupied the armory. There was a rental agreement, a use agreement. The youth center had it for a portion of the time and a portion of the premises. At some time in two thousand and four, state officials contacted town officials in an effort to transfer ownership of the building to the town of Milford. At that time, the Board of Selectmen commissioned a report from our local, our local building, engineering, and fire personnel to examine the building just to see the state that was in and the degree of renovation that would be required. That report estimated that it would cost approximately one to one point seven million dollars to upgrade the building at that time. The town also underwent a twenty-one E report to see if the site was contaminated, which it is not. In June two thousand and six, this body made two unanimous votes. Number one, to acquire the armory for a dollar from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And number two, to appropriate fifty thousand dollars to commission a feasibility study to look more closely at the extent of renovation and repair that needs to be done to the building. In two thousand and seven, the deed was conveyed by the Commonwealth to the Board of Selectmen. Two may, two important items arise from this transaction. Number one, the deed has a reverter clause, and it states very clearly that the town must use the armory for municipal or public purpose, otherwise it reverts to the state. And because the armory qualifies for the National Historic Register, there's a memorandum of agreement between the town of Milford and the Massachusetts Historical Commission that furthers the restrictions of use. It needs to be used as a youth center, and the town was obligated to renovate it for a youth center as funds become available. The Armory Renovation Committee proceeded to undertake the feasibility study using the architectural firm of Bogman and Henry. That study concluded in two thousand and nine. At that time, the study indicated that it would cost somewhere between two point four million to four point five million dollars to upgrade the building, in terms of building code, fire, safety, handicap accessible, and also the envelope of the building. At that time, if you recall, town underwent a borrowing moratorium. There were very few projects that were done during that time period, but the youth center continued to operate, and it continued to flourish, and it did so without monetary support from the town of Milford to fund its operations. The United Way stepped on as a very important partner. They contribute fifty thousand dollars a year towards its operation and its programs, spearheaded by Paul Seva and a very energetic youth commission. They hit the community and sought donations, and they were successful. There's a new furnace in that building, new windows, handicap lift, and other amenities that they were able to do. But there's only so much that they could do with donations and volunteer work. The building, primarily from the roof, but also from the sides and, and the drainage at the basement, continued to deteriorate such that in March of last year, a building inspector conducted an inspection of the building and essentially recommended that it needs a top-to-bottom renovation, not something that can be done piecemeal, not something that can be done by a Band-Aid. It needs to be renovated, and it was time to do so. We came before this body a year ago, and this body approved a three hundred thousand dollar appropriation to authorize the Armory Renovation Committee to obtain design plans and specifications to go out to bid for renovation work. We contracted with, with the architectural firm of OMR and worked very quickly to get this study done, knowing that the building was deteriorating. At the fall town meeting of two thousand and thirteen, with the cooperation and assistance and support of the Finance Committee, this body targeted nine hundred thousand dollars towards the project into the short-term stabilization account that the Finance Committee established. Now, as the Armory Renovation Committee got deeper into the architectural work, and it should be noted that OMR went much farther than Bogman and Henry did in the sense that they cut behind walls, cut behind floors, cut behind ceilings, to see the extent of the damage which was caused by the water infiltration. In January, the committee became concerned about the immediate safety of the building, and we received a report from the structural engineer, and at that time, they confirmed that there are no reasons to have an immediate safety concern, provided that the areas in question are used for basic traffic and not for storage of heavy items or furniture. However, should anything change, such as new cracks or visible changes in the floors, ceilings, and walls in those zones, and they become apparent, the structural engineer needs to be formed immediately to investigate further. So that's the state that the building is in now. One thing I think is significant for the town to realize is that the youth commission was very diligent in trying to seek alternative funding. In two thousand and nine, I think you might all recall, there was stimulus money from the federal government, and supposedly shovel-ready projects could apply and get money. Well, we did, and we felt we were shovel-ready. We had a feasibility study that at least scoped out a general framework of plans. We applied for three million dollars. We got rejected. The youth commission also, I thought, made a very impressive grant application with the assistance of Consigliere Construction to the Department of Energy in two thousand and nine for one point two million, basically to do over the roof, add some energy-efficient windows, other solar panels, I believe. It was a very impressive grant application, and it certainly would have started the ball rolling for these kinds of renovations that we're talking about today. That grant unfortunately was denied. Now, just last week, on May fourteenth, the Armory Renovation Committee and the youth commission appeared before the Finance Committee and were very pleased that they supported this article with a unanimous vote. You saw the presentation by the chairman of the FinCom at the start of this meeting, and even with the appropriation for this particular article, if you look closely at that financial grid, there's still a provision for one million dollars to be placed in the stabilization fund, one point four million dollars to go direct to the taxpayers to reduce the tax bill, and that still leaves the town with one point six million dollars in excess levy capacity, which could be used to pay down debt or could be used to further taxpayer relief. So clearly, ladies and gentlemen, finances are not an issue right now for this particular project. One thing that came to me as I was working on this project, a resident brought to me a publication from 1939 that listed armories throughout the state. There was Westfield, Norwood, Milford. And, you know, I looked at it as I was going through my notes, and I thought, this building, through the hubbub of day-to-day living and just time going by, has really slipped between our fingers as to the meaning that it had for the town of Milford. And, you know, when you look through this publication, it shows the 181st Infantry Division, which was the town of Milford National Guard. Today, with the technology we have, the pictures almost seem quaint, but you can see the level of work that was done with those military outfits in that building. Rifle teams, bayonet drills, athletic exercises, marching. It essentially was the clearinghouse for the young men, and I suppose women later on, from the town of Milford that would go on into the military and serve this country. Now, this was written before World War II, but it's still significant to see some of the names, some of our forefathers from the town of Milford, who served our country and went through that building. Names like Dave Daverin, who was a second lieutenant as a commissioned officer, Bill Broderick, William Birmingham, Fred Bizzarzi, Arthur Del Fonte. It's quite a trip down Emery Lane in Milford. Louis Consigly, Louis DeVito. It says here that "The reputation of the company has always been excellent in military circles, from military, social, and athletic viewpoints. During the hurricane of September 1938, the company was called out for duty by the local Board of Selectmen and handled a very difficult situation in a highly commendable manner." And as you came here tonight, ladies and gentlemen, and you walked past the throng of young children on the sidewalk here, fighting for something that they care about, that they know, that they love, isn't this what we want our young people to be doing? Getting involved in government, getting involved in local affairs? I can't think of any better living memorial to the service of our veterans from Milford than keeping that an ongoing youth center. So with that, Mr. Moderator, we do have two architects who are not residents of Milford. They're prepared to show a PowerPoint presentation, which can give all of you a much better feel and idea as to the extent of deterioration and our plan of renovation and rectification. So, Mr. Moderator, I would ask for permission for those two individuals, Marty Kresh and Marcelo Arona, to address the body.
As indicated, they're not residents of registered voters in the town of Milford, therefore require unanimous consent to address the meeting. Does anyone object to their addressing the meeting? Hearing no objections, please come forward with your presentation.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay? My name is Marcelo Arona. I am the project manager with OMR Architects for the Milford Youth Center project. And tonight, we want to share with all of you the work that we've been doing for the last about eight months on this building. But first, we would like to start by sharing with everybody our initial impressions of this building, which, as everybody here probably know, is not a typical building, is not something that you see every day. So the first thing that we saw that was extremely interesting, especially for architects, was the setting of the building, being so close to the downtown, so close to the core of the town, which gives it a perfect setting for a public use, especially for a youth center use. But in particular, the architecture of the building, you see on the upper right hand. A building that is made out of eight inches granite walls is something that definitely you don't see every day. And it has a certain elegance and symmetry that I think is very attractive and has a very imposing form. Once we went inside the building and looked at how the building was being used, I think that's when it became apparent to us, and really to everybody that goes into the building, that the building was in a high level of deterioration, that needed substantial work. And the first thing we needed to know is to understand what the level of the problems and that deterioration was. And so in order to do that, we set up, the first part of our work was to develop some and commission some specific studies from a technical point of view, to make sure that we not only knew what the problems were, but could diagnose them and address them accordingly. Now, the other part of the equation is that we started this project with zero information. There was no drawings. We couldn't find any existing original drawings. So we basically had to create every drawing from scratch. The first study and the first set of drawings that we commissioned was a full property and building survey done by niche engineering that told us the utilities' location and the geometry of the building and the site itself. In addition to that, once we understood the utilities and what the building was being served by, we needed to understand if they were in serviceable conditions. So we also engaged a firm that inspected the sewer system and the stone system with a camera, and we recorded videos of it to make sure that we knew what was working and what was not. And in addition to that, we also engaged a geotechnical firm to develop some geotechnical explorations shown on the red dots on the slide. They did several borings and analyzed the site geology and the water table. Not surprising for a building of this age, 100-plus years old, it's typical to find hazardous materials in buildings of this age. So we also engaged a firm that specializes on hazardous materials, and they inspected the building, took something about 70 samples of different areas of the building, tested them through a laboratory, and indeed found that the building has asbestos-containing materials and lead paint. So obviously, that has to be part of the scope of this project. Now, the level of deterioration that we saw inside the building, especially visibly from water entrainment, told us that we needed to understand how the envelope of this building was working, both the roof and the heavy masonry walls. So we engaged a firm of building scientists to inspect the building top to bottom and give us advice on how to address whatever problems the building had from the technical point of view. They review, most of the decisions that we've made in terms of design have come from recommendations from these and all these studies. As I said at the beginning, we didn't have any drawings for the building, so we, the team of OMR, went into the building several times, and we measured every single room of the building and created a three-dimensional model that we used to extract drawings, like the ones that you see there, and to develop the construction documents and the design of the project. As you can see on the top right, the building, I'm sure everybody's aware, is basically composed of two pieces. A head house, which has a flat roof, and the vaulted roof on the back, which is a long-span space, the house is the gym. What is important to understand, and we're going to talk about this coming up, is that the building is raised from the street, which makes it inherently not accessible, which is one of the problems that this project needs to address. So in summary, those were the initial studies, not the only ones that we started from. So I'm going to share with you some images that show just visually some of the problems that we identified, both just by doing our research, but also identified by each individual study that was commissioned. Overall, on the outside of the building, both from longevity and also from lack of maintenance over the decades, the building presents different types of deterioration, from losing components of the building, like downspouts and things of that nature. But also, even on the front steps, it is visible that a part of the top landing has deflected and partially broken, which, just in the front entrance, is a tripping hazard. So all these are things that we're concerned about and that we believe this project needs to address completely. Also on the outside, not only visibly, a lot of the components have deteriorated and are rusted or have fallen apart, but some of them present even damage impact. Like in the top right, you see that one of the main gutter systems of the gym is completely broken, kind of midpoint, keeping the water from flowing the way it's supposed to be. And that, in part, attributes, problems like this contribute to the water entrainment on the inside of the building that we also saw everywhere throughout the levels of the building. Now, when we go to the roof of that head house, I was mentioning before, it was identified, simple things like, you see on the top left chimneys that are totally uncovered, allowing the water to go right into the building or the snow, and nothing to stop it. Or on the bottom right, you see flashing components that are, instead of diverting the water towards the drain, are allowing the water to go on the inside of the exterior wall, which is a big concern. And overall, more views from the outside, not only what I was mentioning before, but over the years, several repairs have been attempted in many parts of the building. Unfortunately, not all of them, not with the right materials and not with the right technical procedures. So this is something that has tried to solve some of the problems but have created others. From the envelope analysis that I mentioned earlier, one of the areas that they focused the most on is the granite walls and the openings of the windows and the doors. The granite walls are in great shape. It's a building that definitely is not going anywhere, fortunately, but the joints between those slabs of stone have deteriorated over the years. And like you see on the slide, also, repair attempts have been made with improper materials, improper depth, which not only doesn't help, but allows the water to sneak behind and stay there, going either inside of the building or deteriorating the building envelope even further. So one of the big ticket items of this project is going to be a full repointing of the entire building, to make sure that it stays as solid as it was intended to be and lasts for another 100 years. Now, that's a quick review of the outside of the building. So now I'm going to take you through the inside of the building, and then a couple of items, and then I will go from the bottom up to see some of the problems that we identified on the inside. Going back briefly to the windows, you see how, at some point, a couple of years ago, some windows, some new windows were donated for this project and were installed, as you see on the top left, directly on top of the old, 100-year-old frames that have and show water damage and missing components. So what we have here is a good window on a really bad frame that allows water and temperature to go through easily. So our project is addressing this by trying to save those windows, that's our plan, and address the waterproofing of the edges to make sure that we put them back and this problem is addressed. Now, Mr. Murray mentioned, and I mentioned also at the beginning, the need to make this building handicap accessible so that everybody, regardless of ability, can enjoy the building. And the scope of making a building this old accessible is not only to make people to be able to get in and go through all the levels, but it goes to a depth of addressing the old railings that have improper heights, have improper structural stability. And all these are things that are regulated by the codes, and we have to make the building comply with that. So that is a big part of the project that we are proposing. A quick view of the basement, you see what I was mentioning before, how the water entrainment that is constant and basically throughout the entire building, from the roof, from the windows, from the exterior walls, have come to a point that a lot of the finishes inside the basement have completely fallen apart. And this is just going to continue unless the water and the building is made watertight and weather tight. One of the things that concerned us the most when we were looking at the building is that there are areas, and for those of you that have toured the building up and down, there are areas of the floors that have deflected, and you can feel it is visibly, some areas about two to three inches. So when we saw that, the first thing that we wanted to ensure is to understand whether there were any structural deficiencies that needed to be addressed. So our team of structural engineers determined that we needed to make holes in many areas of the building to identify how the building had been framed and what was the origin of these deflections. So this slide shows you some of the inspections that we did, where indeed we found that because of all this water coming over decades... where indeed we found that because of all this water coming over decades on the rear side of the exterior wall, a lot of the, some of the structural members have rotted away, making some of the floors deflect and some of the walls basically pull the ceilings down. So, this is one of our major areas that the project needs to address. And this is not only found in some of the areas of the head house, but also on the gym, where specifically adjacent to the main egress doors, the water comes basically through the door when there's a torrential rain and right into the floor. So, you see how the same thing is true in some of the flooring materials and some of the subflooring has been compromised by water damage. On the gym, also, the finished flooring has been deteriorated over the years. Of course, many years have passed, and some of those areas are, I think, very dangerous in terms of falling onto a splinter or a shard of wood. These are some additional examples of those walls that have declined by about two to three inches from the original level and pull the ceilings like you see on the top picture. So, these are all areas, and we tried to identify as many as we could. But we also have contingencies to make sure that any surprises in buildings of this age is not unusual to find surprises. But we have tried to minimize it by being as meticulous as possible to identify the areas that are of concern. Some additional examples here that are also shown on the right picture, an area below the roof deck that shows recent and old water-damaged things and that have, in addition to the original, some original deficiencies of the design relative to current codes, some structural deficiencies that are a big concern and need to be addressed. And this project has a good part of the scope devoted to that. Marty? Oh. So, now, that was, in a sense, a lot of the findings that we found and some of the things that we knew had to address. So, briefly, what we, some of the things, I'm going to describe some of the things that we're proposing on how to address this. Primarily, the building, as I said at the beginning, is elevated from the floor from Pearl Street, which makes it not accessible. So, what we are proposing to do is using that symmetry of the front entrance as really the main door. Right now, the building is primarily accessed from the side, which is kind of unnatural for this architectural style. What we're doing is, we're going to try to cut the exterior, the main, the opening of the front door down to make sure that any person, whether it's in a wheelchair or walking, can walk to an entry plaza that is welcoming and then opens into the arch where you're going to see a picture of the elevation coming up. And from that point, you can either go up the stairs to the main level or you can take an elevator that will take you there if you're handicapped or are unable for any reason. The main scope of the project has intended to make this first level really the core of the project and renovate the gym, provide accessible bathrooms on all levels. And really, the focus is to make sure that the youth center of the building commission, the youth commission, sorry, can use these as a point of departure to really build on it now that, once the building is stabilized and weatherproof and having a good, open floor on the main level to fundraise and run their operations. This is a view of the basement where the scope is limited to the areas where we, the new elevator or the new bathrooms will be installed. And the same is true for the mezzanine area, where we are adding an enclosed fire stair to make sure that we comply with egress requirements by the code. The elevator and new bathrooms in those areas that we're also going to do some structural repair on. In general, the building is also going to be fully sprinkler as part of this project. The building is not sprinkler right now. A new fire alarm is going to be installed, and some improvements in lighting will be also part of the project. This is what I was talking a second ago, where you see that the building, instead of having a small arch entryway with solid doors, as it is now, that is not accessible from the street, will now have a much taller space, much taller archway to enter from, and it's going to be fully cladded with glass so that the transparency from the street, you can see what's happening on the inside of the building. And at the same time, we make it handicap accessible.
Okay, Marcelo just told you all what we're going to do with the building. And I'm just going to briefly talk about how much it's going to cost. We started working, as Marcelo said, about eight months ago on the project. And throughout this whole process, we've done a series of cost analysis and cost estimates. The most recent one we did just recently with a ninety percent complete construction documents, which was done by a professional cost estimator, came out at a cost of about $4.2 million, which is just indicated by this slide. The $4.2 million really breaks down into three basic components. The first one is what we call building stabilization. It's making sure where the structural repairs are done, the water is kept out of the building, the roofs, all of that kind of stuff. And that amounts to about $1.55 million. The basic code compliance, which is largely the accessibility, the handicapped accessibility, and the sprinklers and things of that nature, adds another $2.33 million. And finally, the gymnasium renovation, the actual function of the space itself, the replacing the flooring, the lighting, and et cetera, adds about $380,000. So, it's actually the basic infrastructure things that really constitute a major part of the cost. Once we've done that, making the building functional is actually a relatively small component. But these three components, one stabilization, one code, one function, in one sense, they're really all about safety because the building really, from a code point of view, from a stabilization point of view, and from a usability point of view, needs to be made safe. Now, this construction budget of $4.2 million has a bunch of soft costs that get added to it, the architectural fees, testing fees, things of that nature that have to be done during construction, and a contingency. On a project like this, as detailed as our work is, on existing building like this, there are bound to be some hidden conditions. And so, we want to have a fairly reasonable contingency. We've added ten percent to the project cost, which brings us up to the five-point, almost $5.1 million cost. And just as a comparison, we just did a very quick analysis. If we were to kind of build a new building that had the same characteristics of this building, of the same size from scratch, we'd probably be talking about a building about $12 million of construction with soft costs that add. So, we'd be up somewhere around $15 million. So, there's incredible value in trying to making this valuable building, updating it, updating the infrastructure, and so forth. So, we look forward to moving it ahead. If you vote this project ahead, we would bring the project out to bid probably sometime in the early summer, early July. I'll start construction, renovation in September. And sometime about a year later, the building should be ready for your use. Thank you very much.
Is the Finance Committee a recommendation? Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Viscanti?
I don't think your microphone is signed up. How's that? Okay, we'll try it again. My name is Mike Viscanti, town meeting member from Precinct Date. I am not opposed to Milford having a youth center. I think it's a great idea. But I am opposed to spending $5 million on a money pit. Keep in mind, when we initially took this building and established the youth center, this body was convinced to vote in favor of it largely on the premise that the maintenance and upkeep would be self-sufficient and the only expense to the town would be the director's salary. Since we've taken the building, I believe little, if any, maintenance has been done to it. In any case, that's gone by the boards. And now, you're being asked to appropriate another $5 million, which you know and I know is easily going to be $10 million and more likely $15 million by the time the project is done. History has shown us that time and time again with all of the construction we have done in this town, most recently, the Woodland School. As one of the previous speakers had indicated, there is a provision in the release lease, which I believe was recorded probably around April 20 of 2007 at the registry, which is when we took possession of that property. When I say "we," I mean the town of Milford. I can't help but think of one of my neighbors who had this car that he drove day in and day out, even when he did not have to go anywhere. He loved this car. He had formed this emotional attachment to this car, and he had it for fifteen, twenty years. He would die before he would give up this car. Eventually, the car broke down from age, use, and little, if any, maintenance. He was forced to take it to the local mechanic, who told him that, "Look, it's probably going to cost about $2,500 to fix this car up to make it usable. But after you spend the $2,500 to fix this car up, the blue book value of this car is going to be about $1,500." So, for $2,500 in expenses, he ends up with a car worth only $1,500. As it turns out, in the other bay of his two-car garage, he had another vehicle, a newer vehicle, but he had no emotional attachment to this vehicle. It was a vehicle that he had, but he just never drove because he had formed this strong emotional attachment to this older vehicle that he could not break away from. After thinking about it and sleeping on it for a few nights and knowing that he had a car that he loved and did not want to give up, that would cost him $2,500 to fix and only be worth $1,500, and that he also had a second car that he had never driven and was also not really running quite up to par, but turns out it was the battery. So, he had a choice. Spend $2,500 to get a $1,500 car or put a $100 battery in a newer car and break that emotional attachment he had with the old car. Well, in this particular case, he decided to do the logical and physically responsible thing, get rid of the old car that he had grown attached to, break that emotional tie, cry about it for a day or so, and then proceeded to grow, to love, his new car that cost him a lousy hundred bucks to put a battery in. What I think we should do here tonight is do the physically responsible thing, break all emotional ties, and do the right thing, as this older gentleman had done with his car. Now, I know the Finance Committee gave a favorable recommendation and indicated that, "Oh, we have the money to do this." But I respectfully submit to you, just because you have the money to do something doesn't mean you do it. If that was the case, the gentleman would have spent the $2,500 and not cared that he ended up with a $1,500 car because he had the $2,500 to spend. Please, do the right thing. Vote unfavorably on this article.
Any other vote to care to be heard? A woman in the back there, Mrs. Von Tempel. Please identify yourself for Mrs. Von Tempel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mr. Buckley, Mr. D. Bartolomeus, Mr. Murray. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here just simply to give a little history of this building as I know it. Growing up, it was the Armory or the Armory Hall. This building has journeyed across time. It began in 1905, March 9th Town Meeting. The Armory building proposal was defeated. But in November of the same year, 1905, the town meeting voted of building the Armory for the price of $30,000. That money was appropriated for the land on the site of Pearl Street and for the erection of the building. Now, it took almost five years dealing with the state. Some things just don't change. So, in 1911, Captain Pong of Company M, not Company I, but Company M of the Massachusetts National Guard, finally received notice from the Armory Commission to make a grade plan of the Pearl Street site. An announcement was also made at the town meeting that the new Armory would be constructed of Milford granite. J. P. Kethering of Westboro was contracted to build the Armory for a total of $39,887. In June, Carlo Andreolo was awarded the contract to furnish and cut the granite for Company M Armory. Mr. Andreolo lived at 115 East Main Street in Milford. His son, Giovanni, his name is on the Doughboy Monument next to Sacred Heart Church. He lost his life in World War I. Yes, there is an emotional... Yes, there is an emotional connection to people that have a great feeling for certain buildings in this town, which makes us unique. Unless, of course, you like a box or the many, many strip malls that line many of our towns and cities. Captain Pong also secured in 1911, through public subscription, the amount of $2,000 necessary to improve the site on Pearl Street. This money was donated to the town by citizens not only of Milford, but also of Hope Dale. March 16, 1912, the new Armory Building was formally taken over by the state. And on May 3rd, and we are in the month of May, 1912, the State Armory was dedicated 102 years ago. Now, I will leave you with just a few events, highlights, that have happened in, really, this building is a community building. On December 4, 1915, there were 1,242 paid admissions to a basketball game at the Armory, the largest crowd ever attending an indoor sporting event in Milford. In 1921, the month of June, Sergeant Philip Calery's body lay in state. His monument is right across from the Milford Fire Barn, excuse me, Fire Station, on Spruce Street. He was killed in France in World War I, leaving his wife and a six-month-old son. Two weeks later, Private Patrick Mulligan's body laid in state. He too killed in France in World War I. Come July 30, Sergeant John W. Powers, from whom the Legion Post 59 is named, he too laid in state, as he was killed in France. Now, the Depression had Company I. And Attorney Murray mentioned my Uncle David Ignatius Davron, and one of the reasons why he joined Company I, this is the Depression. They received a dollar a drill. That was a lot of money during the Depression. And that building was always warm. Warm in the fall, warm in the winter, because many homes, many homes were not warm during the Depression. Mr. Moderator knows what it is to play basketball in the gym, because St. Mary's never had a gym when we went to school. St. Mary's and Milford High School basketball games were played in that gym, in that Armory Hall. So were all the practices. I'm almost finished. I want to give an attribution by Mr. Paul E. Curran. And now, this happened in the '40s. Corporal David Rubenstein was the 24th Milford man killed in action. He died on July 4, 1944. The war hero Re. Burial Committee decided, and I quote, "That the first body to arrive in Milford, excuse me, would receive the town's tribute for all its war dead." David Rubenstein was the first boy to come home, to come home to Milford on April 23, 1948. His body was taken to the Armory, and honor guard made up of Milford's ex-servicemen stood 24 hours duty at the casket until the funeral at the temple on Pine Street. St. Mary's High School never had a gym, as I reiterate. So their home games continued to be played in the '50s and the '60s in the Armory. Now, what else happened in that building? Does anyone remember taking their driving test because the Registry of Motor Vehicles was located in that building? What about the United Sicilian Organization, for 10, 12, 15 years, had wonderful dinner dances? The public viewing of the scaled models and architectural drawings for the war memorial at Draper Park to honor World War II Korean, Vietnam, and Iraqi veterans was on display in the Armory. And you walked all over the Armory, and they had little boxes next to each of the architectural designs, and you put your vote in, which one you liked. Painting classes, craft shows, classrooms. Do any of you remember the classrooms in the Armory when we had to build a new elementary school? Today, this building is a youth center. But this building has architectural and historic significance. We want to be a friend to this building, making it more special than it has before. Even in spite of years of neglect, this building still stands proud. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard?
Selectman Buckley. Recently, at a selectmen's meeting, I had raised some concerns related to this project. It wasn't concerns that necessarily related to the youth center. As a friend of J.D. Antonio's, I took that responsibility very seriously. Knowing that Town Meeting, Board of Selectmen, the FinCom had always supported the youth center, my question at the time, and I frankly wished this presentation were available a few weeks ago, because I think it was a very well-done presentation, as was the one that was done in front of the FinCom. My original concerns were, was there a cheaper alternative to do this and allow that building to revert back to the state? And specifically, the question loomed for me, Middle School East. That question doesn't linger for me any longer. I think that the committee answered it the other evening, in Sidney's presentation, in John Seaver's presentation, and some of the others. And the other thing that was a challenge for me when we talked about Middle School East is, if the youth center occupied Middle School East, what type of challenge would we have if we went to a rental or lease agreement? If we went to another program that we wanted to occupy the rest of the space, what difficulty would we have in bringing in a new tenant or making arrangements for mixed use? That would have been certainly a challenge. What I would tell you is, this is probably one of the better presentations that I've seen at a Town Meeting, and most certainly the better presentation I've seen at any FinCom meeting. I wasn't able to be there personally, but I did view it from home, not feeling well. I would tell you this committee worked hard. I would tell you this Town Meeting has always been a friend to the youth center. I would agree with the previous speaker who said, "Don't spend the money because you have it." That's not a good reason to spend the money. Spend the money because it's the right thing to do. I'd urge your support for this article. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard?
Moderator?
Yes?
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting members, this is, people always say, "Do the right thing," and all that stuff. Just some points I'd like to make is that Selectman Murray and the committee have done a wonderful job over many years. They've come to this body two or three times. They've gone to the FinCom, step by step. They've done it the right way. When we talk about money, before something can go off a bid, this body has to approve the money. And I think the architect who did a wonderful job said $5.1 million. That's the money, the amount of money, that is available to go off a bid. That sum of money was scrutinized. It was scrutinized by the FinCom. And by the way, you probably have one of the better finance committees in the area. That's why Milford is in good shape. The financial department heads, the administrator, we were involved to a good degree. So when the Finance Committee says the financial plan, it's within that financial plan. That means we can do it. That means it's financially feasible for the town. So when we go off a bid, and the bid comes in, let's say, if someone says $7, $8 million, we're not going to do the project, because we don't have the money. And the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen will be the first ones to say, "Can't be done." But with the architects, with the financial expertise that they have, they said the $5.1 will be okay, and the bids will go out, and hopefully, it'll come in within $5.1, $5.0, whatever the case may be. And then the project can begin. So we don't want to throw out scare tactics. I mean, that's the worst thing in the world, to throw out facts. Misrepresentation's going to cost $7 million, $8 million, $10 million. Come on, we all live in Milford. We all care about Milford. And we're not going to do anything that's going to hurt the town of Milford. I never forget when the Stacy School, the junior high school, was boarded up. It was boarded up for a long time. That looked terrible, in almost the center of town, across from the library. And many of you, people from the town, said, "Please bring that building back," and we did. And that project, Memorial School, cost about $19 million, and look what we have there now. As far as this building, the IDC is working very hard, trying to revitalize Main Street, bringing it back even greater to what it is now. Can you imagine having that building vacant, boarded up, barbed wire around it? And then in 10 years, what are people going to say? You had a chance to do something, let's do it. So I think from my perspective, I think the expenditure is sound, it's wise, it's for a great purpose. We need good buildings in town. In the past, we didn't take care of our buildings too well. During the past 10 years, I think we've done a great job. So my recommendation is, let's do the right thing. It's been financially vetted very well. It fits in with the financial plan. And I think in 10 years, the residents will say, you know, "Thank God, you had the fortitude to go forward, to repair that building, make it almost new." And you heard Marcello, the architect, say that the granite, it's like Memorial School, it's like Stacy School, the granite and all that. It's very strong, it'll last for a long time. But there hasn't been much money applied to that building, more or less, over the years. So you've heard the presentation. If you have questions, please ask the questions. And after you've heard all the information, I hope you'll vote favorable on this article. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion that the town vote to appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $5,83,254, said some to be utilized for construction and related activity for full renovations of the Milford Youth Center and its facilities, including handicapped accessibility. And further, to meet that appropriation, that the town transfer the sum of $183,254 from the excess and deficiency account, together with the sum of $900,000 from the stabilization account. And further, to authorize the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, to borrow the remaining sum of $4 million pursuant to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other authority enabling. Since this motion requires the borrowing by the town of Milford, it requires a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor will stand until counted by the monitors. All those opposed will rise, remain standing, until counted by the monitors. Precinct One? Precinct One reports 11 in favor, 4 opposed. Precinct Two? Precinct Two reports 19 in favor, 1 opposed. Precinct Three? Oh, I'm sorry, 15 in favor, 1 opposed. Precinct Two. Precinct Three? Precinct Three reports 17 in favor, none opposed. Precinct Four? Precinct Four reports 18 in favor, none opposed. Precinct Five? Precinct Five reports 16 in favor, 2 opposed. Precinct Six? Precinct Six reports 20 in favor, 0 opposed. Precinct Seven? Precinct Seven reports 28 in favor, none opposed. Precinct Eight? Precinct Eight reports 16 in favor, 1 opposed. At Large? At Large reports 14 in favor, none opposed. 155 have been voting the affirmative, 8 in the negative. The necessary two-thirds has been acquired, the motion is carried. Article 25? Buckley? What if it's reconsidered?
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $45,000 from the excess and deficiencies account, said some to be utilized to fund the terms of a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Milford and the Milford Library Staff Association, said some to be deposited in the library account number 610-5110.
Motion made, second of the town vote to transfer the sum of $45,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be utilized to fund the terms of a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Milford and Milford Town Library Staff Association, said some to be deposited in the library account number 610-5110. Is any voter here to be heard? Selectman Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town Meeting members, this is an article that funds current collective bargaining contract. It was negotiated and needs to be funded to the tune of $45,000. I'd urge your support in support of the library. Thank you.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Any voter here to be heard? Mr. Burns.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting members, as a member of the Board of Library Trustees, as its current chairman, I would like to urge you to vote for this, and I'm sure that you will, because you have been marvelous to our library in all of the years that I have served as a library trustee. You guys and gals have been just marvelous to us. This is probably my last meeting as the chairman of the Board of Library Trustees, but I do want to convey to each and every one of you, again and again, my sincerest thanks for all of the support that you've given us and our director, and our staff people in helping to make this library into one of the true crown jewels. to make this library into one of the true crown jewels in the greater Milford area. And so therefore, I urge you to support this, and I thank you for having done so.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion. As made, all those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 26.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $30,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be utilized to demolish the town-owned property at 11 Temple Street.
Motion made in second, the town vote to transfer the sum of $30,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be utilized to demolish the town-owned property at 11 Temple Street. Any vote to be heard?
Oh, yes, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. Town meeting members, this is something that we've been working with the neighbors in the area. We took this house as a tax taking in 2013. Presently, it's in disrepair, there are holes in the roof. It's just a bad situation, it's inevitable. And so we would like to demolish the building with the money, make it flat, clean it up, and then maybe sometime in the future, maybe we could sell it for a single-family home. But the main thing is to demolish this building right now, because it's really unsafe for the neighbors in the area and for the kids and all that. So hopefully you'll approve this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Finance Committee have a recommendation for us?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article 27.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Section 2.3 Use Regulations Schedule of the Zoning Bylaws by prohibiting gasoline stations in the CA Central Commercial District, noted hereafter.
Okay. Motion made in second, the town vote to amend Section 2.3 of the Use Regulations Section of the zoning bylaw by prohibiting gasoline stations in the CA Central Commercial District. Does the planning board have a report?
Yes. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noticed public hearing on April 22, 2014, regarding the subject of Article 27, in which time was voted unanimously to make a favorable recommendation to the town meeting.
Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Refer to sponsor.
Any additional person wishing to address the meeting?
Yes. In the downtown area, the last gas station we had is now a convenience store, and to eliminate any further gas stations downtown, any traffic problems, we've decided that if the town meeting voted for, was to prohibit them in the downtown area. This is strictly in the downtown area.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to amend the zoning bylaw by, in Section 2.3, by prohibiting gasoline stations. Again, amendment to the zoning bylaw requires a two-thirds vote. I'll take a voice vote if that is not unanimous, the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 28.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $23,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford Upper Charles Trail Committee, to be utilized for the purpose of design, procurement, and installation of a flashing beacon signal at the Milford Upper Charles Trail, Haywood Street Crossing.
Motion made in second, the town vote to transfer the sum of $23,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford Upper Charles Trail Committee, to be utilized for the purpose of design, procurement, and installation of a flashing beacon signal at the Milford Upper Charles Trail, Haywood Street Crossing. Any vote to be heard? Mr. Moderator?
Mr. DeLuzio.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I'm pleased to report that the end is finally in sight for the longest continuous-running capital improvement project in Milford history, the Upper Charles Trail. Over the past 15 years, this project has dealt with many challenges. The Finance Committee and you have been most cooperative and generous in their resolution. Therefore, in asking once again for your support, a brief summary of events to explain the rationale for this request is in order. Since the final trail segment from Mont Pleasant Street to Route 109 was not eligible for federal or state funding, the Trail Committee developed a strategy to construct it as a cooperative venture by the town and pro bono contributions from local contractors and volunteers. The flashing beacon at Haywood Street was designated a town-provided item. Design plans and permitting were completed, thereby making the project shovel-ready. As the Trail Committee proceeded to develop the pro bono construction program, Eastland Partners, who were the developers of Walden Woods, a complex off of Route 85, petitioned the planning board for relief from their over age 55 restriction in exchange for constructing a significant community project as allowed by our zoning bylaw. Since the time was of the essence, Eastland Partners requested a shovel-ready project. The Phase III Trail project, at an estimated value of $920,000, was put on the table. Eastland Partners agreed to build the trail in accordance with the existing plans and specifications. However, the flashing beacon was not part of the design plans and specifications, and is therefore not part of the contractor's scope of work. The Phase III Trail is scheduled to be completed in October of 2014. This request is made at this time so the flashing beacon can be installed before then to maximize safety at this crossing. I hope you will vote favorably on the article.
Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Motion made in second, or is that person, why, can we recognize there? Okay, all right. Okay. You got to yell at me, Mr. Moderator, and then you can...
Hi, Chris LaValle, Precinct 4. Back about seven years ago, we...
You need a motion, Mr. LaValle. You have to have written a motion to present.
Yes, I'm sorry. Article 28, to see if, I'm sorry, Article 29, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 37, occupancy of buildings. Okay. I moved that the town vote to amend Article 37, occupancy of buildings of the bylaws to replace the existing Section 4 with the following. Section 4, fee. There shall be a fee of $50 to procure a certificate of registration for each unit. Said certificate shall remain valid until there is a change of ownership, change of use, or change of zoning status, revocation of permit, according to Section 5 below, or a substantial remodeling of the unit altering the dimensions of the living quarters. Subsequent to any of the aforementioned events, a new certificate of registration for each affected unit must be procured at a fee of $50. Failure to obtain and pay for a certificate of registration within 30 days of the notice from the Board of Health of the obligation to obtain such a certificate for a unit will subject the person obligated under this chapter to fines of not more than $300 per day, per violation per day.
Motion made in second, to amend Article 37 of the bylaw by replacing the existing Section 4 with the following Section 4, which deals with the fee and is exactly as appears in your warrant article. Does any vote to be heard? Mr. LaValle.
About seven years ago, we approved Article 37, and quite rightly, we asked landlords to pay the cost of the measurement and issuance of the certificates of occupancy. However, instead of simply leaving it there, we also put in an annual fee. We had the certificates expire each year, and we created basically what is really nothing more than a paper pushing fee that landlords have to pay every year for every unit that they have. There's no benefit to the town in terms of any social benefit. It doesn't address any issues to have this annual fee. All it does is make landlords pay to renew their certificate of occupancy. Because most properties, there isn't going to be a change in the dimensions, there isn't going to be a change in use, there will eventually be changes in ownership. It makes more sense only if there's a change in use, zoning, a revocation, or a change in ownership, to leave the certificates valid until such time as one of those changes occurs. There have been some problems with how we have been administering this bylaw. People who don't rent their property have faced having to go to court to defend themselves against applications for criminal complaints, because they didn't want to pay a fee for not engaging in an activity that obligates them to this. Because instead of treating the fee as a fee for an activity in which you participate, the town has been treating it as a tax on a class of property. If you have a property that is listed in the assessors as a multifamily, the determination was made that you must have it available to rent, whether you're using it for yourself and your family exclusively, or whether you are actually renting it, or whether you're simply using a unit for storage. That was not the intent of this bylaw. This bylaw was enacted to prevent rental units in town from being used as illegal rooming houses. It was not intended to become a tax on a class of property. And unfortunately, it seems that this annual fee has become the motivation for turning it into a tax on a class of property. And that's why I urge you to change this and clarify it, make it very simple and plain that this certificate of occupancy is strictly for rental properties, properties offered for rent, and not, and we aren't taxing them, we're asking landlords to pay their own way, pay their way on this with a one-time fee to obtain the certificate of occupancy, which actually is a benefit to them too, because it helps them with problem tenants who changed their property, their apartment into a rooming house. But it's not fair to ask them to pay an annual fee on top of paying the cost of obtaining this. We don't, in fact, I do believe the person that we brought on in 2007 to gain compliance on a part-time temporary basis is still working for the Board of Health in that part-time position, seven years later. That doesn't sound particularly temporary. So I urge you to please approve this article, and let's fix this. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Unfavorable.
Any other vote to be heard?
Greg Johnson, Third Precinct. So my question, perhaps the previous speaker could address this, or counsel, does change of use account for, let's say, I as a law-abiding, you know, landowner, sublet my, rent out my property, they then sublet it out to somebody who doesn't use it properly. If we don't have an annual fee, presumably for an annual inspection, how will we catch them and prevent the intention of this law? And if not, then, you know, how do we prevent the very thing that this body decided we wanted to stop, illegal rooming? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. LaValle.
We don't presently have an annual inspection. All that we have is, every year, we send out a mailing to tell landlords to send us a check, and then we send out a new certificate of occupancy. There is no inspection, there is no measurement, there's nothing done except pushing paper around for this annual fee. And that's not a legitimate reason, in my mind, and I hope in your mind, to continue this fee. The benefit comes from the issuance of the original certificate. The cost comes from going out to measure the apartments and determine that occupancy rate, so that if you have, to determine if you have a legitimate bedroom size, and to basically limit it to two people per bedroom in every apartment that we have in town that's for rent. That's the purpose, and we have very large fines, $300 per violation per day authorized in this article, that should be much more adequate than a $15 annual fee for reminding landlords of their responsibility under this law. As for a change of use, a change of use would be if you switch from a residential use to, if you're zoned appropriately, and you instead rent the apartment out as a business condo or some such thing, that would be a change of use that would require, the next time that you want to use this as a residential apartment, you'd have to go back to the Board of Health, have it measured, and pay the fee again. A change of ownership, pretty clear. A revocation, pretty clear. You violated the tenants, or your property had health violations that made it unfit for human habitation, any of those types of things. Any revocation would cause a new fee for a new certificate of occupancy. But there isn't much sense in just pushing the paper and charging the fee every year. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard?
Kenneth Evans, Health Board Chairman. Mr. Moderator, Mrs. Nevs, town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen. I urge you to defeat this article. This article is proposed to amend Section 4 of Article 17. Currently, an annual renewal of certificate, certification of, oh, sorry, sorry. The proposed amendment would only require the renewal of a certificate of registration when there is a change of ownership, change of use, or substantial remodeling. For the, for this program to be successful and serve its intended purpose, the annual renewal of the occupancy certificate is imperative. The annual renewal process will remind landlords and tenants of their responsibilities of continued compliance with not only their obligations to adhere to occupancy rates, but to other pertinent health, safety, and zoning regulations as well. Continued awareness and education is the most important for the success of any program. Therefore, an annual renewal program is imperative to ensure that the original intent of the program is not cast by the wayside as years go by. So I urge you to defeat this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Mr. Consigliere.
Board members, Mr. Moderator, David Consigliere, Zoning Board Chairman. This is a very confusing article that was brought in front of us. I actually was going to step forward and ask if the Board of Health vetted this. Apparently, they have not. Clearly, I'm not comfortable in voting on this article, and I suggest that you do the same. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Mr. LaValle, one more time.
Previous speaker had stated that it was, that the annual fee is necessary to the viability of this program. I don't understand how. What purpose does it serve, other than bringing in revenue to a non-tax agency, that, if we want a tax on apartment buildings, then we should be going through the tax collector's office and changing the rate on multifamily homes? This isn't the right way to collect a tax, and a non-tax agency in this town shouldn't be able to collect what's effectively a tax here. This isn't really a use fee anymore. It's simply a, because of the way the town has been administering this, in that they have only really been going after multifamily properties regardless of their use, and not really looking at going at single-family homes that are rented. And, I'm sorry, this article is also very closely related to the next article, which removes two words, because part of the problem here, and I believe, again, the motivation for the two words in the next article is this annual fee. Part of the problem is that we have been trying to apply this to any multifamily property regardless of use. And that's actually proved to be unenforceable. But it's something I would get, I can, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to talk about.
You got to track on Article 37.
Right.
Oh, Article 30, I'm sorry.
So.
Twenty-nine.
All I can say is, a change of use is a reason to issue a new certificate. An arbitrary expiration date is simply to bring in a stream of revenue. It has no other purpose. The $300 a day fines, requirement that this certificate be posted in plain view in every apartment being let in this town, provide the education, provide the knowledge that you are only allowed this many tenants in this apartment. An annual renewal makes no change to that. All that that means is that the landlord has to come and put the new version of it in the frame every year, probably when they change the batteries in the smoke detectors. But it has no other purpose. It doesn't serve any real, you can claim this purpose, but I don't understand, and please let me know what real purpose it can show. Change of use is a reason for a new certificate. Change of ownership is a reason for a new certificate. An arbitrary date ticking by on a calendar is not. So I do urge you, please, approve this change. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Mr. Evans.
Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, this is not a tax. It's to administer the program. And how would we know if there was a change of use or any of these other things if we don't have the owners signing that certificate every year saying that, yes, I'm complying, this is, this is the number of people that I'm allowed to have living here, and I'm complying with that. That's what that certificate tells us. And as far as single-family homes, it's not true that this doesn't apply to a single-family home. As a matter of fact, I own a single-family home, and I pay this fee every year, and it's at Five Howard Street, if anyone has any question about it. So I think it's just necessary for us to keep our finger or our hands on this program, that we get that certificate each year, that the owner says, yes, I'm complying, this is the number of people. Otherwise, they change the use, how do we know? So I urge you to defeat this article. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes. Mr. Valdez. Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I think, the article, I think, is rather confusing. I just have to take it back a few years ago. We had some significant problems in our neighborhoods. Overcrowding, public safety was at detriment, there were a lot of things going on. The Board of Health, to their credit, put together a task force of police chief, fire chief, building commissioner, they had discussions with us, and they came up with Article 37, which they brought to this body for your approval. Since then, we've gotten many calls from residents saying, hey, things are better, the neighborhoods are better, there's less overcrowding, there's less violations going on. As a matter of fact, we have a task force that presently goes into different areas, and most of the landlords are great people. But there are some, they're not, they don't really care about, their neighbors are the town of Milford. So I think we should, you know, go very, proceed very cautiously if we're going to change this, because I think the Board of Health is doing what's right. I think that they've listened to the neighborhoods, they've listened to residents, and trying to protect our properties. And I think if we change that, I don't, I don't think we should revert back to the way it was before. So please, defeat this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard?
Yes. I have a two-family home. I live in one part of it. Thank you all for hearing me. I just want to say that, first of all, we're not talking about inspection. The inspection has already gone on, and we're talking about the years following the inspection. We are paying $15 every year, okay? It's the idea of it. Why do I need to pay to remind myself of safety features, like you said? Why don't you pay to remind yourself of safety features?
Speak on the article, and don't attack other previous speakers, please.
Sorry. Anyhow, this, this certificate is to measure the apartment, to determine how many people can live in it, period. When that's determined, that's the end of it. The apartment doesn't grow, it doesn't diminish, it stays, the measurement stays the same, the number of people stay the same. There's no need to dish out $15 every year for nothing, absolutely nothing. That's unfair, and I'm sure it must be illegal really, but anyhow, I just had to get up here and say that, because it isn't fair, plain and simple. It hasn't been all along, but you get tired of fighting. That's all. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Mr. Evans.
I really don't want to drag this on, it's getting late, but I just want to make one point. As far as it being illegal, these landlords have taken us to court, and the courts have ruled that this is perfectly legal. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Motion made, and secondly, we move the previous question to tip to shut off debate. It's not debatable, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the question rise remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed to moving the previous question rise remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one. Precinct one reports 12 in favor, none opposed. Precinct two. Precinct two reports 10 in favor, none opposed. Precinct three. Precinct three reports 16 in favor, none opposed. Precinct four. Precinct four reports 15 in favor, none opposed. Precinct five. 16, I'm sorry. Precinct five reports 17 in favor, one opposed. Precinct six. 18 in favor, zero opposed. From precinct six. Precinct seven. Precinct seven reports 21 in favor, none opposed. Precinct eight. I'm sorry, Lewis. Six. At large. At large, 13 in favor, none opposed. 24. 129, having voted in the affirmative, one in the negative. The motion to move the previous question is carried by the two-thirds. Question now comes upon the motion to amend Article 37 of the occupancy of buildings of the bylaw to replace the existing section four with the new section four dealing with the fee. All those in favor of the motion manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. No. More is in doubt. All those in favor, rise remain standing until counted by the monitors. Is it that? Precinct one, all those opposed, rise remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one. Precinct one reports four in favor, 10 opposed. Precinct two. Precinct two reports two in favor, seven opposed. Precinct three. Precinct three reports three, three in favor, 13 opposed. Five in favor, 11 opposed. Precinct four. Precinct five. Precinct five reports 14 in favor, three opposed. At large, precinct six. Mr. Moore, what do you got? Three in favor and 14 opposed? Precinct six. Precinct six reports five in favor, 11 opposed. Precinct seven. Four in favor, 17 opposed. Precinct eight. Precinct eight reports zero in favor, six opposed. At large. At large reports one in favor, 13 opposed. The motion is defeated.
Again, Chris LaValle, precinct four. Article 30. I move that the town vote to amend Article 37, occupancy of buildings of the bylaws to replace the existing section two with the following. Section two, certificate of registration required posting. No person shall rent or lease, offer to rent or lease, or make available for rent or lease any building or any portion of a building to be used for human habitation without first registering with the Board of Health, which shall determine the number of persons such building or portion of a building may lawfully accommodate under the provisions of the Massachusetts State Sanitary Code and applicable Board of Health regulations, and without first also conspicuously posting within such building or portion of a building a certificate of registration provided by the Board of Health specifying the number of persons such building or portion of a building may lawfully accommodate. The provision shall not apply to units or portions of buildings which are occupied by the record owner thereof.
I just need the motion, copy the motion. Motion made, and secondly, the town vote to amend Article 37, occupancy of buildings of the bylaws to replace the existing section two with the following. Section two, certificate of registration required and posting. It's exactly as appears in the warrant. Does any vote to be heard? Mr. LaValle.
Yes. This removes one clause where it currently, where this proposal reads, to offer to rent or lease, or make available for rent or lease, or have, is the phrase that currently appears in the, in the existing bylaw. And the problem there is that we're talking, and this is, this is the crux of the previous article as well, the or have means that if you have the potential to rent a property, regardless of the use you put it to, if you have a two-family, and your family has expanded so that you have four or five people, and decide that an extra two bedrooms and an extra bathroom would be very useful, the or have here has resulted in the town coming after property owners who aren't renting their property out, but are using their property for their own private use, for the $50 and the $15 a year fee in the bylaw, simply because the property is classified that way, despite the fact that further down in this article, it says that this provision shall not apply to units, plural, or portions, plural, of buildings which are occupied by the record owner thereof. What this means is that the town sends out a demand, and if the landlord, property owner says, I don't rent my property, the town then says, you have to pay anyway. The landlord says, I'm not paying because I don't rent my property. The town applies for a criminal complaint against the property owner. And this means that the property owner has to take time off from work, go down to the court, where the clerk magistrate sits down with the town council, the health agent, and the property owner, and dismisses in favor of the property owner because the property is being used solely by the property owner for the property owner's own use. Now, that happens on rare occasion. I don't know how many times this happened. Mr. Moody could probably tell us. But I know it's happened at least once, because my wife and I defended ourselves on this, and we won. We haven't rented our property since 2006 before this bylaw went into effect. We added another kid to our family, we decided we wanted the second bathroom and the extra bedrooms, and we weren't willing to pay simply because our property is classified as a two-family, and we weren't willing to rip out a heating, two heating systems to put in another one at a cost of more than $20,000, simply to avoid a $15 a year fee. It was, it was a ludicrous situation that we were asked to do in order to not be subject to this, despite the fact that as the court agreed with us, the provision shall not apply to units or portions of buildings. And the comment that was made in court when the decision meant for us was that it kind of undermines the entire purpose of the bylaw, because the intent was to apply it strictly to any property that was classified as a multifamily regardless of use. Single-family units, unless they're rented and the landlord tells you they're rented, the town isn't investigating unless there's some type of a tip. As for the issue with any type of a problem on a property, this bylaw made it much easier that when there is a complaint from someone other than a tenant or the landlord, the town can act. That was the whole purpose of this. And the $300 a day fines were the reason that, the reason that landlords will jump to and do what they're supposed to under this bylaw. Putting people in the position of either giving in to effectively blackmail when you know they're not renting, or you have no evidence that they are renting their property, and they claim that they're using it for themselves, by taking out a criminal complaint against them is wrong. them is wrong. And there's nothing in this either to stop the town from going after owners of single-family properties. If, if you own a single family and you take a job for two years out of state and you want to come back to your property and you don't want to rent it during the two years you're going to be away, or you're deployed overseas because you're in the military, the town could say, because your property is vacant, you must pay this fee because it could be rented. Just like they tell owners of multifamilies, because you have two units, you could, instead of living in both of them, live in one and rent the other. It's not reasonable to ask people to pay a fee and be subjected to a bylaw on the potential that they might engage in an activity for which you charge that fee. It's like saying if you own a fishing rod, you must buy a fishing license even if you hate to go fishing. Or if you have a bow and arrow, you have to buy a hunting permit because you could conceivably go hunting. I urge you please to amend this so that we remove the specter of criminal complaints against good property owners in town, simply on the potential that they might one day decide to rent their property. Thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? Town council moving.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Despite the way it may sound, I mean, myself, as town council and Board of Health, we're not spending a lot of time prosecuting people because of violations. In fact, the vast, vast majority of landlords are satisfied that the program works well. They cooperate with it, and they regularly give commendation to the Board of Health for the program and how well it works and how it helps them in their situation. So if I've been in the six years or seven years, I think I've been up in court three times, that's all, on, on applications for complaints. And yes, occasionally, one doesn't issue, and that's fine. That's the way the system works. This change simply removes, as Mr. LaValle said, the prior speaker, the words "or have." So right now, it reads, "No person shall rent or lease, offer to rent or lease, or make or have available for rent or lease." And the reason it was worded that way was just to prevent us from having to have constant debates over whether or not, what a person's intentions are. You've got a unit, it's fully available, but I decided not to rent it. So the Board of Health doesn't have to get in those debates, just as the assessors don't have to get in those debates. If I have a two-family building, it's got two units available, it's tacked as a two-family building, whether I utilize it or not, it's an opportunity that I have. And again, this word, wording was chosen just to avoid these kinds of debates, so that if I have the unit available, then it's, the taxation's going to apply to it, and this bylaw's going to apply to it too. It's really pretty straightforward. It has not been any major issue in court or otherwise. And again, we're getting ninety-nine point nine percent compliance in the program across town at this point in time. So I'd urge you to defeat this change. Thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion that the town vote to amend Article thirty-seven of the occupancy of buildings of the bylaw to replace the existing section two with a new section two on a certificate of registration requiring posting. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is defeated. Article thirty-one.
Mr. Moderator, selectmen, town meeting members, I move that the town vote transfers the sum of twelve thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized to purchase electronic tablet devices to be used by all committee and board members to access reports and data during scheduled meetings.
Motion made in second, the town vote to transfer the sum of twelve thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency accounts, said sum to be utilized to purchase electronic tablet devices to be used by all committee and board members to access reports and data during a scheduled meeting, during scheduled meetings. Finance committee has a favorable recommendation. A vote again to be heard. Mr. Shane.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, the finance committee has seventeen members. We get tons of paper that we have to carry around, budgets, the school budget's about that thick. We go to meetings and we have to reference all of this stuff. And, and we get presentations like the one you saw tonight on paper. What we'd like to do is move into the twenty-first century and, and have everything on the cloud so we could reference it at any time, at the meetings. People don't have to print it out. We save a bunch of trees. And, and the units would be available to all committees. Each committee would have their own password for their cloud, and they'd have all the documents there too, so we can eliminate a lot of paper, and it'll be easier, and it will all work much better. And I urge you to pass the article.
Are we talking about all committees in the town, not just finance committee, right?
Mr. Moderator, we're going to buy seventeen units. We have fifteen members on the committee and a, and a, a consultant and a secretary. The tablets would reside either in, in the town administrator's office or some central place where every committee, when they have a meeting, can go and pick up four or five tablets if it's a planning board and utilize it, or if it's the board of selectmen and they get to that point, or any other committee. It's not for the finance committee's personal use. We just happen to have the largest committee, and so we'd have to buy the most amount of tablets, that's all.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to transfer the sum of twelve thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency accounts, said sum to be utilized to purchase electronic tablet devices to be used by all committee and board members to access reports and data during the scheduled meetings. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is, motion is carried. Article thirty-two. Motion to pass over Article thirty-two. Motion to pass over is a attempt to take no action on the, the motion is, on the article is inserted in the warrant. Does any vote again to be heard of the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article thirty-two. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Article thirty-two is passed over. Article thirty-three. Mr. Chris Foley.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of money in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the highway surveyor for the purpose of continued storm water management compliance and mapping.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of money in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the highway surveyor for the purpose of continued storm water management compliance and mapping. Finance committee have a recommendation? Favorable, any vote again to be heard, Mr. Chris Foley?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, the need for this article is for the continued implementation of the Milford's ongoing storm water management program. The amount, the amount we are requesting is for the startup of our storm water mapping program to meet the expectations of the EPA's new storm water permit. Therefore, I urge your favorable support. Thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-four. Mr. Carroll.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to amend the personnel bylaws of the town as follows. Effective July first, two thousand and fourteen, section five point one three A to five point one three B shall be deleted and replaced by the following new section, five dot one three. Longevity pay shall be granted to permanent full-time personnel in salaried and hourly-rated positions based upon cumulative years of experience in the town of Milford. Three hundred and fifty dollars per year for years ten through fourteen, four hundred and fifty dollars per year for years fifteen through nineteen, and six hundred and fifty dollars per year for twenty and thereafter. Individuals employed as permanent part-time and salaried and hourly-rated positions prior to January first, two thousand and fourteen, shall be granted longevity pay on a prorated basis so long as continually employed.
Motion made in second to amend the personnel bylaw in the town, in the town as follows. By effective July one, two thousand and fourteen, sections five point one three A and five point one three B shall be deleted and replaced by the following new section, five point one three, and that's exactly as appears in your warrant that you have before you. The finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable, any vote again to be heard, Mr. Carroll.
This particular revision will help us so that it will be unnecessary for us to come up and revise the bylaw every time a new position is added, a new category is created. Town council has reviewed it and approved the wording of, of the amendment. I urge your favorable vote.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article thirty-five. Mr. Shane.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be added to the stabilization account.
Motion made in second, the town vote to transfer the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency accounts, said sum to be added to the stabilization account. Any vote again to be heard, Mr. Shane?
Thank you. As we discussed at the beginning of this meeting, whenever we have excess money or money that we could spare, the plan is to put it into the stabilization account so we can help offset the, the debt. And I urge you to vote favorable.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to transfer money into the stabilization account, requiring a two-thirds vote. I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-six.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move the town vote, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of five hundred thousand from the excess and deficiency account to be utilized to offset the snow and ice deficit in the current fiscal year.
Motion made in second, the town vote to, that, I moved that, motion made in second that the town vote to transfer the sum of five hundred thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account to be utilized to offset the snow and ice deficit in the current fiscal year. Does any vote again to be heard? Mr. Shane.
Normally, we offset the snow and ice deficit in the fall. This is the only account in the budget legally by law that's allowed to run over the, the allotted number. Again, the money is available right now, and it's worth spending it now as opposed to waiting until the fall because we'll use the money in the fall to do other things. I urge you to vote favorable.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-seven. Our town accountant, Zachary.
Town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer funds between certain line items voted under Article four of the May twentieth, two thousand and thirteen annual town meeting for the purpose of making funds available in line item accounts not sufficiently funded through the end of fiscal year two thousand and fourteen as follows. Department one twenty-two, selectmen, general expenses hydrant two ninety-six, fifty-three hundred, amount twenty-five thousand dollars. Transfer to general expense, selectmen, account one twenty-two, fifty-three hundred. Second transfer, department one forty-eight, general government, general expense hydrant two ninety-six, fifty-three hundred, amount ten thousand dollars. Transfer to salaries and wages, general government, account one forty-eight, fifty-one, one oh. Third transfer, one seventy-four, town planner, general expense planner, account one seventy-four, fifty-three hundred, the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars. Transferred to salaries and wages planner, one seventy-four, five one one oh. Fourth transfer, department one seventy-five, planning board, general expenses, planning board, account one seventy-five, fifty-three hundred, and the amount of one hundred and fifty-six dollars. Transfer to salaries and wages, planning board, account one seventy-five, five one one oh. Fifth transfer, department four twenty-one, highway department, general expenses hydrant construction, highway construction, I'm sorry, account four two two, fifty-three hundred, and the amount of ten thousand dollars. Transfer to repair and maintenance vehicle equipment highway construction, account four two two, dash, five four two zero. Final transfer, department five ten, Board of Health, general expenses, unemployment, fifty-one hundred to twenty, five three zero zero, and the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. Transfer to salaries and wages, Board of Health, five one oh, five one one zero.
Motion is made in second, the vote, the town vote to transfer funds between certain line items voted under Article four of the May twenty, two thousand and thirteen annual town meeting for the purpose of making funds available in line item accounts not sufficiently funded through the end of fiscal year two thousand and fourteen. As follows, selectmen account, general expenses, twenty-five thousand is general expenses, selectmen. General government, general expenses from hydrant, ten thousand dollars to the salary and wages of general government. Town planner, general expenses planner, three hundred and fifty dollars to salary and wages of planner. Planning board, general expenses, planning board, one hundred and fifty-six dollars to salary and wages, planning board, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. Highway, general expenses, highway construction, ten thousand dollars to the R and M vehicle equipment highway construction. And Board of Health, general expenses, unemployment, twenty-five hundred to the salary and wages of Board of Health. The finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Any vote again to be heard? Zachary.
Town meeting members, when Article four is voted, as you did earlier tonight, it is an estimate. Department heads try their best to keep within budget, but sometimes circumstances such as unexpected repairs or retirement puts actual expenditures over budget. Likewise, other departments often come in well under budget. This article cleans up the budgets within an existing appropriation. I urge you to vote favorable.
Any vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-eight.
Article thirty-eight, I move that the town vote to close out certain special article accounts to the general fund of the town as follows.
I'll ask the, Zachary, if it's exactly as...
It's the same, except I'd like to strike the third to the last category for fuel pumps for Birch Street in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars.
Okay, so you have before you the motion, and what he's doing is not, is striking Article thirty-two of the five, two thousand and twelve annual town meeting, the fuel pumps for Birch, the twenty-four thousand dollar amount. So that's not included in his motion. Any vote again to be heard in the motion to dispense with the reading? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense with the reading. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Does any vote again to be heard?
This article takes a look at pass-approved articles where the objectives have been met within appropriation. Any remaining balance is no longer necessary to be encumbered. By closing these budgets, the undesignated fund balance will increase and ultimately increase whatever free cash the town may have in FY fifteen. The total today is nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-six cents. Thank you.
Any other vote again to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Mr. DiAntonio. Motion made in second to dissolve the warrant. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no.